Good evening, everyone. This is the March ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Select Board. And this meeting is being held remotely pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one. My name is Katie Kynlon. I'm the Chair of the Board. Would everyone please introduce themselves?
Alfredoil, Vice Chair.
Mike Sula, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
Okay, thank you all. And we're also joined by Linda Napoli of the Select Board Office and our Town Planner, Tim Zerwinski, where I see now Ms. Ms. Amory Fagan is in the attendee group, so we can move her over. Interim Town Administrator. Okay, the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could please post the photo of the American flag and we'll stand and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of original states. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, thank you, everyone. And this this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Milton Access Television. The first item, and welcome to Ms. Fagan, the first item is public comment. Do we have anyone here this evening in the attendee group for a public comment? If so, please raise your hand and we will recognize you. We have approximately fifteen minutes for public comment. Oh, and let me state at the beginning of the meeting, in case there's anyone here for items eight and nine, which relate to the billboard proposal. We're going to be taking that up at eight thirty PM this evening because the applicant's attorney, Mr. Corcoran, is at a meeting tonight regarding the town meeting article, one of the town meeting articles. And our town council will be joining us as well. So that will be held at eight thirty approximately. We're going to defer it until that time. If that's agreeable to the board and it's at the request of the applicant. Okay, so let's go to citizens, because I see Carrie Snyder and then Priscilla Sloan, Ms. Snyder. If everyone who speaks would please raise, please give us your name and your organization or your street address.
Sure, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Carrie Snyder. I'm the Advocacy Director with the Napaunset River Watershed Association. And I am here to speak on item number eight. I know there were several people that commented at the last Select Board meeting, and I do not want to reiterate anything that that they said. But I do want to urge the Board to vote to actively oppose this project as it moves through the state permitting process, rather than sort of refrain from from supporting it. I think that's that's very important for Mass DOT to see that the town is is opposed to this. I also just wanted to make to raise one issue. There seemed to be a question about whether or not the proposal was actually proposed within the Napaunset River Estuary area of critical environmental concern. And while I have not yet seen a detailed site plan, there seemed to be a misunderstanding about the boundaries of the A C E C. Attorney Corcoran seemed to be indicating that the entirety of two Granite Ave was exempted from the A C E C. And in looking at the designation documents, you will see that only two pockets of upland are actually out outside of the A C E C. So based on the preliminary sketch that was showed to the Select Board back in November, it does appear that this this project will take place within the A C E C and therefore should go through the BIPA process and perhaps even obtain a wetlands permit. So those are those are the only comments I wanted to to raise, and I'd be happy to answer questions after after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you.
Priscilla Sloan is next, and then Henry McLean.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Priscilla Priscilla Hayden Sloan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. And I would like to ask the Board, as a longtime resident of Milton, as a Napaunset River Watershed Association member, as an avid user of the Napaunset River Bike Pass and Park Areas, I ask you to vote no on the proposal to erect an electronic billboard at number two Granite Ave in Dorchester. It will disrupt the lives of birds and wildlife along the river and shine into the homes of our nearby neighbors in Dorchester. I respectfully ask that you consider these points when voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McLean, and then Cheryl Togayes.
Hi there, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Welcome.
Yes, hi, my name is Henry McLean. I'm a resident of Milton, and I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and another colleague with Sustainable Milton. We have some rather long, well, page or so, statements. My colleague Alex Hasha, I could read his first and then read mine. I've also sent these to Melinda for your files. So why don't I read Alex's first? But this is in support of the effort for a climate action study by KLA Associates, you have item six, I believe, on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Alex Hasha, recently joined the Board. Sustainable Milton had the opportunity to sit in the meeting between the town and Kim Lundgren Associates to review their proposed scope of work for a Town Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory and Climate Action Plan. In my professional life, I I lead a data engineering firm that is building carbon emission analytics platform for large corporations. And I have specific experience with the data and methods KLA will be using to perform the emissions inventory, and that is why I selected to be a point of contact between Sustainable Milton and the town during this process. I am strongly supportive of the proposed scope of work and urge the Select Board to approve the funding necessary to allow the work to begin in all possible, with all possible haste. Kim Lundgren Associates have been doing this sort of work for over a decade. And I can tell immediately at the first meeting with them that they are sharp and experienced. The proposed inventory will be aligned with the greenhouse gas protocol for estimating carbon emissions, which is the accepted standard methodology in the private sector and municipal sector. Funding the work will demonstrate Milton's commitment to meaningful climate action and improve our chances of receiving grant funds to fund development and execution of the Climate Action Plan, which is the real outcome we need to be working towards. While the work to create a greenhouse gas emissions inventory is necessary and should begin promptly, I urge the Select Board and Planning Board not to wait for the process to be completed before beginning to make plans to drive greenhouse gas emissions reductions in Milton. We need a hand, we need the hard numbers, but I can tell you right now that a predominantly residential town like Milton will find that majority of the gas, greenhouse gases come out of cars and chimneys of boilers and furnaces where their consumption of electricity, growing number of Milton residents are upset about climate, climate inaction, as business and state leaders increasingly commit themselves to bold plans to meet the challenge of climate change. The trend is clear, future public opinion will not be kind to those who keep pace with the, don't keep pace with the commitment the state has made for a carbon neutral future. It's already been a year since the state legislature passed S nine, an act creating a next generation roadmap for Massachusetts climate policy, more broadly known as the Mass decarbonization roadmap. It was accompanied by a detailed state level plan that requires the electrification of home heating and cooling and private transport. We are already falling behind on executing the roadmap plan due to the lack of coordinated action at the state and local level. The state roadmap states that Mass should be converting a hundred thousand homes a year to electrocute. The actual number is less than thousand. We can't act like this is a private problem and expect private citizens to solve it on their own. Today, these projects are expensive, complicated, inconvenient for homeowners, and out of reach for most renters, and that won't change without government help. It's our local building code. It determines the installation standards, the H V A C technology allowed to our homes and others and offices. It's local contractors working under the supervision of the Town Building Inspector who advise residents on the systems and buy for their homes. It's the local planning board that reviews the weather building plans, new housing developments are consistent with a clean energy future, approves the installation of charging infrastructure that could make electric vehicles ownership a more viable option for our town residents. Funding this proposal with KLA is an important first step in the right direction. I hope that while the inventory is in process, town leaders will be actively thinking about what comes next. And then I'll just read your mind, try to be quick about it.
Yeah, Mr. McLean, you're up over three minutes, so if you could be very brief with the next letter, perhaps summarize it, if we could.
Well, I'm reading for two people, that's.
Yeah, I, we have two more hands raised. We would like to speak. It's Citizen Speak. So if you would also submit it to the Board, Melinda would forward it. Everyone will have a copy.
All right. Well, just to let you know, I've been a member of Sustainable Milton as well, and I was a committee chair for the Milton Alternated Energy Committee that began working on the town's planning, community development, Milton's Consolidated Services developed energy reduction plan back in two thousand ten. And as you all know, probably that that effort should place in two thousand eleven put in place over a million dollars worth of funding that's come through in the meantime. We also worked on the D O E R footprint. We're happy to help have the support and of Kim Lundgren Associate, actually, it's Kim Lundgren herself, working as another under another entity at the time, who was a good consultant for the effort. And then our two thousand eleven M A C report, we for the town to access inventory greenhouse gas emissions tool was developed with help from the town. Two fourteen, we we completed this work, document the following, close to fifty-six percent of Milton's greenhouse gases come from homes, thirty percent from vehicles, and twelve percent from the commercial sector. And so the the effort is is going forward is seventeen, that the town being just a small fraction of the municipality. So we've been advocating for a townwide campaign to help large residential sector of the town achieve the level of energy reductions that the municipality did back in two thousand fifteen in a residential efficiency program campaign in line with that savings would could save over six times of the footprint of the town itself. So we've also been working on the Solarize effort and which has had an effect of getting another amount of P V in town, the size of you know, the school over at another fifty percent of homes in Milton are eligible for solar systems capable of returning a fifteen point percent ROI. So I'm excited to join colleagues in offering full support for the KLA Associates' proposal and the next step towards a full climate action plan and a carbon free Milton. Thanks so much. Sorry.
Mr. McLean, could you give us your street address for the minutes, please?
Yeah, I'm one forty-seven School Street.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in tonight.
No worries. Take care, thank you.
Cheryl Togayes, and then we're going to end with Mara Doherty, and we're up to seven twenty. So I'll just ask that both of the next speakers, please try to be as brief as possible. Good evening, Cheryl. Thank you.
Good evening, Katie, and members of the Board. I will be brief. I'm here to speak to the billboard proposed for two Granite Ave. I would like to urge you to vote no on that billboard for the following reasons. It would be constructed in an area that is protected as natural and open space, and it would not be in harmony with this setting. It would cause significant damage to the visual environment and distract from the natural beauty of the area. I'd also like to point out that it is opposed by the nearby neighbors in Dorchester, and I think that should be a factor in your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And lastly, we have Mara Doherty. Doherty?
Hi, sorry, a little trouble with the unmuting. Sorry about that. I'm a resident of Milton. We live at one seventy-seven Canton Ave. And it's my understanding tonight that the Select Board plans to vote on a procedural matter, whether it wants to actively oppose the Flatley Company's application to be considered by the Mass Department of Transportation or whether the Select Board decides to sit back and not support the billboard proposal. The latter decision sounds like the right decision until you realize that sitting back still allows the Select Board to continue to negotiate with the state for economic benefit from the billboard, even if it doesn't plan to support the billboard. That's the rub. So if you put it another way, i- if you're on a diet, why would you tempt yourself with a three-layer chocolate cake and leave it conveniently in the kitchen with a fork nearby? I deeply respect the Select Board's decision to examine every opportunity which could bring in revenue to the town. It's your job to do so. But it's also part of your job to decide whether to sell out to or to move on from some of these opportunities that come along that can be very tempting. In my opinion, this particular opportunity has too many calories and comes with too much cost to the town's reputation and character. So I urge you to say, please, no thank you to Mr. Corcoran's billboard proposal, full stop, and not send its application on further to the Mass DOT. Thanks very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. And again, for anyone watching or who is here as on the Zoom, we will be taking that matter up on the billboard at after eight thirty PM, at the earliest eight thirty PM, possibly a little bit afterwards. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is number four, acceptance of Woodlock Drive as a public way, and our Planning Director, Tim Zerwinski, is here. I I also see Mr. Mastriani from Pulte Homes. If you can move him over to the panelist's room in case there's anything we would like to hear from Pulte, or if we have any questions. Why don't I turn this over now to Mr. Zerwinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're here tonight for a, it's the the second of of two public hearings that the Select Board has had to engage in for the process of accepting Woodlock Drive as a as a town way. You'll recall, is it even a few months ago now? It feels like just yesterday that we were here for a public, a public hearing for the Select Board to to declare its intent to to take the the road as a town way. That's the first formal step in the road acceptance process. In the intervening period, there had been a meeting of the Planning Board, for the Planning Board to really engage in its role as, you know, the the body that had approved the road, that had laid out the specifications for how the road was going to be built. So it's really the Planning Board's role to, you know, take a good look at the road, make sure it's been built to the standards that were laid out in the subdivision approval and to issue a report to the Select Board. They issued that report, I believe, in.
Tim, let me just interrupt you for one minute. Since it is a public hearing, I probably should have opened the public hearing right before you started. So let's open the public hearing. And we're going to hear from Mr. Zerwinski and Mr. Mastriani. If there is anyone in the attendee group who would like to speak to this, we will get to you after we hear from the applicant. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Zerwinski.
No, not a, not a problem. So the the Planning Board did meet in January to to evaluate this issue. We did solicit the input of of the the Engineering Department and the Department of Public Works. And they issued a report. I'm trying to bring it up. I'm on my phone, unfortunately, so I have a little bit of a hard time bringing up these documents. But I believe I I sent that report to you on January thirtieth. And they they took, they took two votes. One of them i- isn't technically involved in the the process of taking the the way, but it is connected by virtue of the circumstances of of how the road's built and the condition that it's in. So they determined that the Woodlock Drive is in good shape. It's built to their specifications. Everything, everything checked out. We we did identify an issue at the bottom of the road where it meets Unquity Road, where there had been some some ponding of water after a storm that was kind of interfering with the new bike lane that had been painted over there. You know, I, Mr. Mastriani may, if 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 he knows, kind of talk about, you know, what the cause of that issue is. It's not as important as getting it fixed and making sure that that problem doesn't persist and that we're getting all of the rainwater, all the stormwater into the catch basins like the road was designed to do. So the way that we've approached that issue as 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 Planning Board and as a town is Pulte was was asked to put up a a security bond at the beginning of this process, you know, all those years ago, basically to secure the construction of the road. This is a very typical process in subdivisions where you know, we we ask an applicant to put up a bond in the unlikely event that their operation goes belly up and they can't finish. that their operation goes belly up and they can't finish the road. Then the town has the money to actually go in there and lay down the asphalt and finish the road so we don't have a half complete roadway. So Polty, in in the in the course of this process, and this is, you know, the the portion of it that's unrelated, but also kind of related, had requested the release of that bond from the planning board. We're at the end of the of the process of building the subdivision. It's an appropriate time to evaluate things and see if we can release that bond. So the decision that the planning board made, and this is in their report that I I sent to the select board, is they 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 did vote to release the bond on the condition that a portion be withheld enough to cover securing basically the fix at the bottom of the road that I I just discussed of that issue with the with the ponding. And then as it relates to their recommendation to the select board regarding the adequacy of the construction of Woodlot Drive, they 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 voted that it was built to their specifications and they recommend to the select board that you do accept it as a town way, conditioned on withholding a sufficient portion of their security bond to fix the issue of the ponding at the at the bottom of the road where it meets Unquity Road. So those those two votes are kind of connected because they're kind of joined by that bond. And and just, you know, for for folks that I I'm sure you're all familiar with this concept. But, you know, like I said, we want to make sure Polty has committed to fix that issue. We've met with them on site with the engineering department and their engineers and and contractors. We've got a solution. Mr. Mastriani can can speak a little bit more to that. Our engineering department has come up with a a figure. We're going to withhold something just a little bit more than thirteen thousand dollars of that bond. It's really not a major issue to fix. That figure is actually probably a little bit more than than we can expect to need. But it's it's good to have, you know, that cushion. But we we don't anticipate needing that bond because, you know, Polty's been, as I said at the last hearing, a a really great partner on this project, very responsive, very cooperative. And and we we trust that they'll get out there as soon as the weather is 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 good enough to get out there and fix that issue, at which point we'll we'll release the full amount of the bond. So, you know, with that, Madam Chair, I may ask Mark Mastriani to just kind of speak maybe a little bit more to that issue, just to give you a little bit of detail. Th- this is the only, you know, physical issue with the with the road. Once we finish that discussion, I I I want to talk about one other discussion that came up at the planning board related to a question of of whether the town would take, simply just take easements in 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 the roadway or to take full fee ownership of the roadway, which I I don't know if Town Council's on the call just yet, but we may ask for 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 his his opinion on that. But it is something that came up at the planning board that I have a little bit more commentary on. But I think if if Mark can speak to that kind of engineering issue, I think that'd be good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zerwinski and Mr. Mastriani. Before you speak, I do see Town Council. I also see the Public Works Director, and I don't know if he's here for this item or subsequent item. But if if our webinar host can move those two over while we go to Mr. Mastriani, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Mastriani, welcome back to the select.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for your time tonight. For the record, my name's Mark Mastriani. I'm here representing Polty Homes. And and Tim is very thorough in his information. I concur with everything he said. So, you know, we have completed the subdivision in the roadway to all the specifications of the town. There was one punchless item. It was the puddling at the bottom of Woodlot Drive. There was a meeting with our team, you know, our managers, our construction folks and and our contractor with Tim and Tim from Engineering and Chase. And I think in the building, Inspector Joe was out there. And we we had a meeting and we reviewed the issue and we we all came up with a solution. And, you know, Polty is fully committed to executing and 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 performing the fix. Basically, we're going to mill a small area and create a little swale to the nearby catch basin that the water should be getting into. And then we will, you know, repave and infrared, infrared the seams. And 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 that solution is is proposed to to fix the puddling issue. And and we will do it as soon as weather allows. I do have a proposal that's just shy of five thousand dollars to to do it from our contractor. But we accept the bond that the town and the the engineering staff has come up with. And that's not a problem because we fully intend to do it very quickly. And 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 we'll get our bond back when we do it successfully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mastriani. At this stage, does any member of the board have any questions? And while we see if there's anyone who has any questions, if there's anyone in the public who is here for this public hearing who would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will get to you shortly during this public hearing. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question, because this is the first I've heard it, Tim made mention of easements. I don't, I think that's the first time we've heard this. I don't think we've heard that before.
At the planning board, we do have Mr. Freytek here who can speak to that.
My, that's what I was going to ask, because if I'm correct, if we accept it as easements instead of a public way, doesn't it affect making a private way? Because many of the private ways in town were actually created by way of easements going back hundred years or even more with a lot of them. So I'd be interested to see what Kevin has to say.
The intent here is for it to be a public way.
That's what I thought.
We had been talking about a fee interest. Let's go to Town Council and have them address this. This this issue came up at the planning. Mr. Freytek, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Kevin Freytek from the Office of Town Council. So there are two ways to go about a town accepting a roadway to make it a public way. It can do it by way of an easement or by way of just taking the entire roadway. In my experience, easements are often the 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 better choice when a road has been in existence for a long period of time. And there may be some questions regarding the property that exists underneath the road and maybe concerns regarding liability related to what may or may not be under the road and that unknown. But in situations where you have a new road that is part of a subdivision that is that has been developed, it is my experience that it's common for towns to simply take the road. Taking an easement or taking the the full fee interest in the road are both ways to make it a public road. And really, it it just kind of comes down to a decision-making process by the town that is usually sort of driven by those concerns I just referenced regarding if there's any sort of unknowns or risks associated under the roadway. In this case, where it's a brand-new road and a brand-new subdivision, it seems to me to be perfectly reasonable to simply take the roadway as opposed to taking a a easement in the roadway.
Thank you, Mr. Freytek. Is there anything further, Mr. Wells?
Oh, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Madam Chair. That answers the question perfectly.
Thank you. Any other member of the board? And again, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public who is here who would like to ask a question or offer a comment, please raise your hand. Anyone from the board have any questions or comments? We'll go back to Mr. Wells.
No, no, no. I I I thought I had taken a.
Okay. All right. I I see no hands raised in my attendee group. I'll just ask one more time if there is anyone here to speak to the acceptance of Woodlot Road as a public way. The next, the step would be for the board to close the public hearing and take a vote tonight if that's the will of the board. And we also will be bringing this issue to town meeting for town meetings vote at the May town meeting.
Madam Chair, can I make one more comment before we close? I don't think it's important whether it's in the public hearing or out of the public hearing. But one one just relevant to this issue of of taking fee interest in in the road. We we are going to have to make a slight edit to the the town meeting article that was submitted back when the the warrant deadline passed. Just to reflect, I I I again, I don't have the the exact language in front of me, but just to reflect the town meeting giving the 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 select board the ability to take either easements or fee interest. Fee interest is not currently in that language right now. So it's just adding, you know, a couple, a couple of words to a line. But that's, that's, that's something that the select board chooses to do tonight in their vote. We'll have to make that edit and and swap that that new article in.
Okay, Mr. Zerwinski, let me ask you that. Is there any reason that you're aware of that the board should not take a vote this evening?
No reason whatsoever. I think it would be, it would be totally fine to take a vote tonight.
Okay, and looking at Town Council's memo, if the board does want to take a vote, the vote would be to lay out Woodlot Drive. And then we have a Form, Form Five, which we would sign and file with the town clerk's office if we were to vote in the affirmative.
And 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 Madam Chair, the other thing, and and this this came up during the previous public hearing about intent. If 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 you recall the the memo, we technically don't need to have a public hearing. The reason we have a public hearing is to reserve the right to take land or easements via eminent domain if that's necessary. Again, just like the the bond, we don't think it'll be necessary. The the understanding in the agreement all along has been for Polty to hand over the road. But, you know, if if we want it, you you're going to want to secure and reserve that right, which is kind of what triggers the public hearing here. So just, you know, I I would, I recommend that your your vote, your your motion kind of reflects, you know, reserving the right to take take land or easements via eminent domain if necessary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zerwinski. I see no hands raised from any of the attendees. See no one on the telephone. So if if you were, if there were someone on the telephone, it would be star six. But I don't see anyone on the phone. Is there any member of the board who has a comment or question? Or is there anything else, Mr. Mastriani, that you would like to add or Town Council or Public Works Director? So please let us know before we close the public hearing. Okay, then do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move, Madam Chair. Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, discussion. Do we have any discussion or would anyone like to offer a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move the town of Milton accept Woodlot Drive as a public way, preserving the right to take land or easement by eminent domain if necessary.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, it looks like Form Five would be signed by all of us. So why don't we have that form filled out by, we need to insert a legal description. So once that's ready, Linda Napoli will let us know when that's ready to be signed and filed with the town clerk's office. And the the bond, I understand, is related to the planning board's permit. So that's within the realm of the planning board's jurisdiction. So there's nothing that we need to do on that. All right.
That that's, that's right.
All right, so thank you to Mr. Mastriani for joining us. And Mr. Zerwinski, I know you have a forty B hearing to get to. If you do want to stay for the next item, it's our comment letter on the zoning requirements for the MBTA community. So.
Unfortunately, I think I'm needed. So I'm going to run over there. But we can, we can debrief afterwards if if necessary. So thanks, everybody.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Zerwinski.
Thanks, everybody as well. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, we're on to item five. We have a draft of a letter prepared by Mr. Zerwinski that everyone received a day or so ago regarding the MBTA communities zoning. So do we have any questions or comments? I thought it was well done and it's reflects a lot of the comments that were submitted to us during the public meeting on the zoning that we held on March first. I thought we might want to submit this to the, I don't know if the planning board has had an opportunity to take a look at it. I thought we may want to have, give the planning board an opportunity. This is not due until the end of the month. And we did receive comments from Mr. Whiteside, who raised a legal question regarding the D H C D regulations. And I think we may want to review that with Town Council and see if there's anything to be added to the letter on that, on that issue. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would merely recommend that the letter, a copy, our state legislators, both in the Senate and the House of Rep. Senators and any other appropriate parties that bear on this matter.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Thank you. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I agree that we should look into Mr. Whiteside's comments. I I don't know if we might actually want Johanna Schneider to look at that particular issue given, given the nature of it and some of the work that's already being done by him and Mayne Barnes. I I thought the letter was excellent. I thought it was very clear and I liked the graphics. I think they're demonstrative of the points. And I I haven't emailed Mr. Zerwinski. I just had some questions around the definition of multifamily housing and some ideas about what we might, what that we might want to clarify a couple of things in there. So I liked your idea about sending it to the planning board to see what their reaction is. And it may be too early, but I guess one of my questions was just, for instance, in available area for zoning district, looking at the the his comment about the shape and size of our transit catchment, you know, be compelling Milton to make choices about density and district size that other similar towns may not have to make. I'm just wondering if we need to be more specific and 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 say what we're asking for. Or, you know, they're all planners, so they probably will immediately grasp what what Mr. Zerwinski's saying. It was just, it was just a wondering on my part. Thank you.
Okay, and and one of the reasons I thought the planning board may want to look at it is Kathleen O'Donnell had some very specific comments. So I'd like to be sure we captured everything that she raised at the meeting on March first. All right, if there's no other discussion on this letter, why don't we best Mr. Zerwinski share it with the planning board members, ask them to try to take a look at it within a week or so and get back to us. Our, we we are meeting next week before town meeting, but we're also, we have a regular meeting on the twenty-third. So that's probably the night to target finalizing this letter. We could put it on next week on an agenda cases, anything that anyone would like to discuss about it if we have time to get to it next week. Obviously, the priority those nights will be the town meeting. Is there anything else on this letter before we go on to the next agenda item? Okay, then thank Mr. Zerwinski and ask him to send it on to the planning board. The item six is the scope of work from Kim Lundergan Associates for a climate action plan. I know Ms. Collins has been working on this. I see her Public Works Director and Environmental Coordinator, I think is the right title. And Ms. Collins, I don't know if there was anyone else who might be in the attendee group who's joining us for this tonight. If you want that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Berkeley and Ms. Patel are are staff on this at the moment. So thank you both for coming this evening. If I might, Madam Chair, just provide a little background about where this originated. Thank you. Thank you. A couple of months ago, Sustainable Milton approached the town about using ARPA funds to create a climate action plan. Milton's already been addressing climate change and energy use through the Massachusetts Green Communities and the M V P programs. And Marina Fernandez, our town engineer, also thought funding might be available through the federal infrastructure bill. And of course, that changed over time as it went through the House and Senate. So I I'm not sure what that looks like now. But Mr. Berkeley and Ms. Fernandez, Mr. Zerwinski and Ms. Patel met with Alex Hosh, as as you heard, he's from Sustainable Milton, to discuss the plan. And the proposed scope of work that you have before you this evening outlines a two-phase process for creating a plan to reduce the town's net zero so that we can reach net zero emissions of greenhouse gases by 2050. So this evening, we're looking for two things. Consensus that the town should create a climate action.
Consensus that the town should create a climate action plan. And I might also add that Mr. Dennehy worked on Boston's and thought this was a very good idea. So he's not with us anymore, but I appreciate his support on this. So that first consensus is that we should have a climate action plan. And the second consensus is that we do a greenhouse gas inventory, which would require some upfront money in the form of $25,000. And that initial information could be very helpful in securing grant funding for the second phase, which is $150,000. But I will stop right here and turn it over to Mr. Berkeley and Ms. Patel to walk you through the, the scope of work and also answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Collins. And I know everyone knows Mr. Berkeley, but maybe Mr. Berkeley could introduce to the audience Ms. Patel and her new role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's why we, he wanted to make sure Mira was here tonight. So she's no stranger to the DPW doing her co-ops here, but she is new to the role of environmental coordinator, filling the vacancy when Erica DiNatale left. So we're very excited that Mira was able to step right in. It was a very smooth transition since she had already been working in the office, literally beside Erica, you know, for several months. So we're very happy to be able to retain her and, and very excited. So she's in, finishing up her grad school program now, working part-time and will be full-time come May with the town. So looking forward to that. I'll let Mira just say a few words if she'd like. I don't want to put her on the spot, but the floor is yours, Mira, if you'd like it.
I think Chase said a lot of what I was going to say. But I've did under environmental science for my undergrad with sustainability, and I am currently doing sustainable building master's program at Northeastern. And as he said, I've worked in some capacity with Milton for the last year. So I'm really excited to be working on the climate action plan based on sustainability and also as I've grown to know and love Milton. So I'm, I'm really excited about this, if of course we go forward with it.
Thank you, Mira. So, Mrs. Collins, thank you.
Welcome to Ms. Patel and her, in her new role. We're all looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Chase, if you want to introduce the plan and talk a little bit about what we're doing?
So yeah, so thank you, Mrs. Collins. You did an excellent job outlining the effort here, and you're right on the money. And I apologize, I missed, I know there was a couple residents who spoke at Citizen Speak. I didn't get a chance to catch their testimony, but I imagine it was spot on with the effort. And so really, this effort is, you know, something beyond town departments. It's for the, you know, community of Milton to really engage in. If you look at some of the neighboring cities and towns that have gone through this process, many of them have made it a town meeting article to offer, you know, a, like a referendum or, you know, not, not necessarily a vote, but, you know, get buy-in from the public that this is a direction that the community wants to go in. So we, we solicited a proposal from this firm because they worked with us on the MVP establishment for the town, and we were successful in that. And so by securing MVP status, now we're eligible to apply for MVP action grants. And so the, the schedule for this coming up is that the state appears to be opening up requests for grant applications in the next couple of weeks. And we'll give, be about an eight-week period to submit applications. And then we'll probably find out sometime around August whether or not we're successful. So it, by completing the greenhouse gas inventory, which will set benchmarks and an understanding of where the town sits right now and, and define some metrics on how to track progress. It will position the town very well for those MVP action grants, which are very, very competitive now. A lot of towns have got that MVP status. So there, there's a lot of competition for those dollars now. And completing this Phase One effort will really put us in a good position. Should the unfortunate happen and we don't receive it, the greenhouse gas inventory does have benefits to do on its own, mainly because the second part of the inventory is what they call a pathways analysis, or how do we get to 2050 and how do we achieve those goals? You know, in parallel with the state goals to get to that net zero carbon emissions. And by doing that, we'll basically have a climate action plan without the public engagement component of it. So even if we don't get the grant to, to do the full plan with all the, you know, the $150,000 piece of the scope, we're still in a very good position to, to keep this moving and, and, and keep progress going on it. So it, it's worthwhile, you know, even if the unfortunate is to happen. And so I think, you know, from the public work side, we're, we're just looking to make sure everyone's aware that this effort's going on. And, you know, if we have support, then we'll, we'll certainly do the legwork behind the scenes to keep this going as far as procurement and execution of it.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Berkeley. Do we have comments or questions from the board? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chase, did I understand that based on the timing for making the grant applications for Phase Two, that, that completing Phase One, the greenhouse gas inventory, is time-sensitive?
So I would say it's time-sensitive to begin. It's probably about a five-to-six-month duration for the inventory. And it's not, you know, we wouldn't finish it in time to apply, but we would note in the application that we've undertaken the effort, which gets you just about as much credit as completing it. So that if that's underway at the time of the application, that shows good faith from the town.
So what, so when do we need, what's the timing for getting it underway to get the benefit of that with the application?
So if we were to receive a grant, we'd be looking to get the Phase Two piece going in August.
No, 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 I, I meant, I meant for getting the greenhouse gas inventory underway.
Oh, that, that would be in a very short timeframe. So we would want to be able to say in, in the application period, which will be probably concluding at the end of April, maybe early June, that we, we would, you know, have started that at that point.
So, so, so is, is the ask of this board support to do the greenhouse gas inventory and the $25,000 in funding and trying to, trying to figure out how to fund it? Is that the, is that the ask?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be a very quick timeframe. They're also really ready to do it almost immediately. They're just waiting on our, Kim Lundrian is basically just waiting if we can do it or not.
Okay, and, and do I understand, and I see Arthur, and I promise this is my last question. Do I understand that this is a possibility for ARPA funding?
Yes, that's correct. If you take a look at the Wellesley Plan, they actually cite ARPA. They just completed that in February of this year. They cite ARPA as a funding source.
Thank you, Chase.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to invite Chase and Mira to consider an information item on this very important topic for the Conservation Commission, and I'll speak to John Cannon beforehand, if your time and willingness permit. And considering the significance of, of what's at hand, if it's appropriate, I would move, Madam Chair, for Milton to create a Milton Climate Action Plan.
An emotion, Arthur?
It is a motion, sir.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? I think Ms. Collins might be ready to speak to that. Ms. Collins?
Well, I, 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 I welcome a motion. I was hoping this is the direction we would go in. My question is, it wasn't on for approval, but really consensus? So are we able to do this?
Let's just see how it's worded on the agenda. It's on for discussion of the scope of the book. So I think it's probably on just for discussion to see if we could put, we, we actually could put it on for a short vote next week.
Does, have a table, a motion, then, Madam Chair, if it's agreeable to the second for?
I, I'm fine with that. Can they start? Is a week enough time, or do they, is Chase and I need to stop right away? Like, does it need a vote for us for them to stop? Madam Chair, I'm asking you that.
You know the answer to that, Ms. Collins, or Mr. Berkeley?
Well, I, I'm, Mr. Berkeley is probably knows better. But my, my understanding was that, you know, that this can just be contracted. We're, we're already associated with Kim Lundrian through the MVP program. So this is really ruling off of that. They're, they were looking for a consensus and, you know, and, and some, some idea that we would be committed to getting funding. And it may, we may want to vote formally, but Mr. Berkeley, would it be good enough to know that we will be voting formally?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. Yeah, a week's not an issue. Yeah.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me make a suggestion on timing. Perhaps we could consider this other, under our other category on the ARPA, the ARPA review from the Finance Committee on Friday morning. And then, and then report that out for a vote by this board either next Monday or next Wednesday.
Yeah, what, I haven't seen how your agenda is worded, but if you can do that, that would be great. If not, we could just put it on to the board agenda early next week, since we've already had a discussion tonight about it. It, it may be a matter of updating your agenda tomorrow morning if it's not broadly enough.
Yeah, and, and if the board doesn't feel that it needs the, the Finance Committee to weigh in on that ARPA, then, then we can just do it or, or, but, but I do think we, you know, I, I do think our, our agenda probably provides for it. But, but either way, we can, we can either consider it then or we can just do it as a board next week, as you, as you suggest.
Okay, Mr. Doyle?
I was just going to say, Madam Chair, if I may, if there's going to be ARPA funding involved that really should go before the Finance Committee, either before or after a formal vote is taken. So that there may be two votes. One is indeed creating a Milton Climate Action Plan. The second would be the funding. And for the ARPA, we would probably, would we not, Michael, need a statement that's, that targets it to ARPA funding and specific dollar amounts?
That, that's right. If, if, and if Chase could get us something, you know, if we, if, if he could get us something. And we have the amount, the $24,999, I think. And if you could get us something in writing and how this is a click, how this is, how this meets the requirements of the ARPA funding, then perhaps we can take it up on Friday and, and move along.
No problem there.
All right, so why don't we let the Finance Committee figure that out, whether they're going to take it up on Friday? And, and we can always put it on for a vote next week as well. All right, are there any other questions for, for Chase Berkeley, or Mira Patel, or Ms. Collins? Okay, then, I thank you all very much for coming in for all your work on this important effort. And we'll look forward to taking this up again very soon.
Thank you, everybody.
Nice talking to you.
The snow will be over shortly.
That's good. Okay, item seven, these MOU with the MBTA regarding the Central Avenue and Canton Avenue signage. Everyone has a draft of the MOU. Town Council has reviewed this. Does any member of the board have a question or a comment? Or we, we have had some discussion on this in the past. And the town will be accepting the signs and assuming ownership of them. And we, we talked before about not wanting to have any requirement that we maintain them, but to make that optional for the town. Does, which I understand is acceptable to the MBTA. Does anyone have any comments or questions? And if not?
Make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the signage, MBTA Railroad signage at Intersexual Central Avenue and Capet Street, subject to agreement between the town and the MBTA.
Well, okay, I, I, along those lines, we want to approve the actual MOU since we'd be authorized.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
We want to authorize the town administrator to sign it as well.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, that language, if you get that, Lynn.
Okay, then I will second it. So it's to accept the signage and to approve the memorandum of understanding with the MBTA and to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the board. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, it's only 8:02, so we're going to defer items eight and nine for a little while. And we will move on to item 10, Committee Update on the Equity and Justice for All Committee. And we have a draft of charge for the Permanent Committee that Mr. Zulus forwarded, which I'll ask Mr. Zulus if he would like to speak to. I understand that changes come from the committee itself. Mr. Zulus, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. What you have in front of you is a marked version from the original charge and a clean version showing the, the proposal from the Equity and Justice Committee. This is their proposal for establishing a, a permanent committee rather than the, the, the 18-month committee that we established back in the summer of 2020. And so the, as I said, these changes have come from the Equity and Justice Committee, and it is their proposal. I don't know if we have anyone from the committee tonight. And so if there are any questions as to the, the reasoning and the thought process that they had, you know, we might, I, I think they're coming in on the 23rd for their report, unless I'm mistaken. So if, if people aren't comfortable moving forward, then perhaps we could, perhaps we could have someone in at that point. But that's, that's what, that's what's in front of us tonight.
I don't see any names in the attendee group that I think are committee members, but there are a couple that are just first names, or we now have one phone number. Is there anyone in the attendee group from the Equity and Justice Committee who was here this evening for this item? And if so, please raise your hand, and we will move you up to panelist. In the meantime, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be prepared to move this tonight. I'm just experiencing your time. But we know, we've been prepared for this. Let's, let's move it and give us some permanency. I see Mr. Zulus is shaking his head. I'll make that as a motion. If, if you'll accept that, I'd make that, that we, I'll accept, I'll second your motion, Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I, I don't see any hands raised, so I don't think we have a committee member here this evening. I too am in favor of voting this evening. Is there anyone else, any questions or comments on the motion or on the charge itself? This is actually in the form of a proposal, so we're going to need to eventually convert the substance of this into the charge. But it's all here. We can just put it in a different form. Mr. Zulus?
I, I, I will just say, Madam Chair, this is one of the recommendations of the Equity and Justice Committee. I think it's an important step to take what was an impermanent committee and make it permanent and make the charge that we, that we approved back in August 2020 permanent. So we have, we have continued vigilance on these issues. So I think it's, I think it's an important step, and it's one that's been recommended by the committee. So I, I, I'm certainly in favor of it and appreciate the fact that the other board members are as well.
Yeah, and I think when we go to convert this into a, a charge rather than a proposal, it's probably just a matter of, under the word proposal, taking off everything above it and maybe just stating, instead of the establishment of an advisory committee, the select court establishes an advisory committee, and I think the rest of it is fine.
And I think, if I may, Madam Chair, I think also we, right, in the first, in the first sentence, it talks about establishment of a permanent advisory committee. In the title, it doesn't include the word permanent. So, so we just want to make sure that that, that carries through the language.
Okay, so I, I, do you want it to say Permanent Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All? Is that the?
Yes, that's, that's what's in the first sentence. And so I, I just want to make it consist, I would say we, we should probably make it consistent.
Okay, so well, in the, in the heading that's bold and underlined, we'll take out Updated Proposal for Establishment of AM, and then we'll just say Permanent Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All. We'll delete the first sentence on the word proposal, change the first paragraph to the board establishes, instead of the establishment of. And then under, we'll change proposed membership just to membership. Does that work? And then I think we just take off respectfully submitted by Mr. Zulus, and then we're, then we have the charge. It will be in the permanent book and boarding committee binder. Okay, any, any comments? All right, then let's vote. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Next item is the town administrator search committee. And we have two items. One is an update on the consulting services. The RFQ is still open for bid, so we will not have anything further on that tonight other than just to acknowledge that it, it is still pending. And as soon as we get past the bid deadline, which I, I did not have time to go back and check, but I think it was March 17th, we will have that on a future agenda. We also have information that Town Council provided to us about the Collins Center. So once we have the RFQ responses, we'll be able to evaluate both. The charge to the committee, before we get to that, The charge to the committee, before we get to that, we should say that one member of the proposed, one member of the committee, the committee has not met yet, but one member is not going to be able to serve and so we do have a vacancy and that will be on our agenda for one of the meetings next week at town meeting. But in the meanwhile, Mr. Zulus has proposed drafted, taken the the laboring law on drafting a charge to the committee that we have drafted for review tonight. So if there's any, why don't we go to Mr. Zulus first if he wants to speak to it and then do we have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and I used as, as a starting point, the charge that was used back in 2016. And so there are many, many things that are similar to that. One is that we're asking the committee to, to come up with at least three, to recommend three candidates to this board that here that the committee will consist of nine people. And, and this is a little bit different. We're asking the committee to review the duties of the town administrator under the Section 2 of Chapter 65, which is the town administrator legislation. So the committee is, is, is cognizant of what the duties of the, our strong town administrator position are and that they make a decision on the, on the candidates based on, in part, in part on the review of that, of that legislation and those duties. And other than that, one other change that is made, we've asked them to to recommend candidates to us, three qualified, at least three qualified candidates to us within the, within three months after their first meeting. Given the, the time sensitivity here and, and the, and the length of, of, of Ms. Fagan's role, we wanna move this along and so the, the hope is that we could get some candidates within the first three months. So that's, that's essentially what, what we have in here.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Do we have any questions or changes or comments on the charge?
Just one question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And it's not, I'm fine with all that. It's just, Lyn, if we could make sure that the members all get sworn because they can't meet a vote until they're sworn at the town court's office. Very important. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, anything else on the charge? Okay, then, do we want to go ahead and approve this charge? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the charges outlined by Mr. Wells.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And thank you, Mr. Zulus, for taking on the work of doing that. It's very helpful. Okay, item 12, capital improvement planning committees reported is 811, so we're still deferring eight and nine. We want to, capital committee.
I believe, Madam Chair, I believe we want to bring Karen Preval and she should be in the waiting list, should be in the, she should be somewhere out there.
In the attendee group. Let's move over our Finance Director, Karen Preval. And, Mr. Wells, if I could ask you and Ms. Preval to talk first to the bonded items, because that portion of the report, I'm gonna recuse myself. Other items I won't be recused on, so I will come back for that part of the discussion. Good evening, Ms. Preval. Thank you for coming in tonight. Ms. Collins, did you have something before I recuse myself?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wondered, did, did we receive material on this? Because I couldn't find anything in email or anything in the pack unless I missed it.
We brought it to the Finance Committee on Friday. I don't know, but I think it's, it's a one sheet. Karen may be able to, you're gonna, you wanna share your screen tonight, Karen, again?
Yes, I can share my screen.
I think you're right, Ms. Collins. It wasn't in our package tonight. I just had a copy from, from last week, so.
Right, okay, but it was, it's the same as last week. And I'm good.
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Doyle, if you wouldn't mind acting as the chair, I will come back as soon as the bonded portion is concluded. Thank you.
Karen, did you hear the chair's comment there? We go through the bonded, the bonded items first and then come back to the other article, the other items after that.
Yes, I did hear. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Can everybody see my screen? Can everyone see the screen? So, um, we are coming before the Select Board to request $6,154,050 to fund capital projects for FY '23. If you'd like, I can go through the different projects. Our committee met throughout for the last few months. We sat with different department heads looking at needs. We had more than $8.8 million worth of capital projects and we, you know, in terms of identifying what projects we wanted to propose, we really were looking at first nondiscussionary things that we really needed, you know, especially with IT and making sure that our servers are secured. And the top first two priorities for departments, you know, first, we're looking at safety, we're looking at health and the most important is that we're, we're looking at how could we fund projects that would allow the town to maintain a level funded debt service over the next couple of years. So as we move throughout this process, we, I don't know if you'd like me to go through the projects. We'd like to request $1.6 million to be authorized to be bonded for Gao Field Reconstruction Project. This is just a portion of the cost of this project. We also were looking for DPW. It's for paving and draining improvements. This is Phase Two and Three of a project that had already been started with the town. We have $700,000 that's allocated toward the animal shelter.
If you could just take a pause right there, Karen, that's the only thing I want to talk to, if, if that's okay.
That's all right, ma'am.
So, um, I believe I already briefed the chair on this. So for the members, as you know, the town sought an RFP for the animal shelter, which we're about 15 years into right now. We still have a broken ground to be built up off of the old dump road, 750 Randolph Avenue. As we all know, the low bid, they were anticipating a bid between 3.1 and 3.3 million and the low bid came at 5.5 million with a high bid of 7.9 million. There was, Mr. Ritchie came to our committee. There had been a lot of discussion back and forth amongst the animal shelter advisory committee as to, in the DPW, the project manager, with the, the town party thing. So, Mr. Ritchie provided a very good detailed argument to us that if we could provide 700,000 for the site preparation and if the town could bid and do the site prep themselves, we could do it for about this price tag. I, as Karen knows, I had originally thought a half a million, but he made a very strong argument, which was unanimously endorsed by the committee for 700,000. As you all know, we've been stuck in this now for years. There's significant donation, which, as you know, I'm attached to the donors and so I'm recused on that aspect. But this fund here, this placeholder that we were able to come up with and make here, if we approve this, would allow the town immediately in July to go out, bid the site work, have the site work done and then let the animal advisory committee take it from there to erect a new shelter on the site as it's all prepared. So that's how we arrived at that. We, I know Ms. Collins and, and and the chair have attended several of the more recent meetings of the committee and we do believe that this would break the logjam and allow us to finally get this project on the road to its completion. Thank you, Karen, and that, if there's any questions, I'll gladly answer them at the end. I just wanted to brief everyone how we went, how this came to us and how we arrived there. Go ahead, Karen, that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll continue on the projects that we're looking to fund. The Milton High School auditorium lighting and fixture upgrades. We're also looking at some, at the school department, the bidirectional antenna upgrades. There are some technology needs for the school department. One was to update the virtual server environment. That was for $52,000. The end user device replacements, those are Chromebooks. These were eligible under equipment for capital, so we felt that this was a need that was one of the top priorities for the school department that we felt we needed to address for the students. We also have the server replacement for $28,500. The road construction, we were requesting 800,000 in the past. We have requested a million dollars for road construction, but we felt that between previous years and looking at what we're actually spending, what we actually can spend each year, we felt that 800 and working with the DPW director, that 800 would be enough to fund the different road construction projects for FY '23. Within the garage, there, there's a chairlift that was an urgent need and I believe state mandate that it need to be fixed, so we're asking for $70,000 for the garage lift. In the police department, there's an upgrade to the emergency operations center for 150,000. And then we had for IT for the town side was the network switch upgrades and that was for 300,000 and we're also requesting funding for the ladder truck for 1,600, bringing the total to 6,154,50.
Thank you, Karen, for that enumeration of the bonding items. Richard, do you have any other comments that you wanna add to Karen's before we leave it open for discussion?
No, the, the only other part that I touched base on is, there were some comments at the, at the and I'll account and follow up on this. There were some comments about we initially thought that perhaps we would touch capital stabilization. Karen is, I'll let you touch base on your thoughts.
Okay, so currently, as when we were looking at how we were gonna fund capital projects and really allow some of the, the, some of the projects that departments may have had on the list for years to be funded, we really had to look at what are the other funding sources we could use other than issuing debt. So one category was ARPA funds. With ARPA funds, we were able to, there were projects that are eligible under the new final rule that we were able to look into. In terms of capital stabilization, we have $1.1 million in capital stabilization and so we wanted to fund a portion of the parks project and a portion of, for the body cameras with the, you know, assumption that if we receive additional money, we can always replenish that particular stabilization fund. The rating agencies are always looking at towns' financial stability and with how they replenish accounts that they borrowed against. So I just wanted, I was just constantly keeping that in mind as we were looking at the projects and reviewing how we could financially fund these. And then we have bond premiums. When we, we issued bonds in 2018 and at the time we received premiums and there was laws that were changed recently that allow bond premiums to be used towards the use of capital projects and it can also be used to reduce debt. So we thought this would be a great time to use some of the funding that was there. There was $230,000. We're gonna be issuing bonds in the next couple of years for the fire station, so I'm, you know, I can, I definitely can see our bond premium account going up again. So I thought that this would, and we all came to a conclusion, this would probably be the best way to fund these different projects.
Karen, two questions regarding two of the bonding issues. The one is with DPW paving and drainage improvements, Phase Two, Three. I understand the paving cannot be covered by ARPA. Is there any way to segregate out the drainage improvements to see whether or not that could be covered by ARPA funding?
We can. We can definitely look at that. There's definitely a lot of opportunities and there may be something within the drainage portion, anything that's, you know, looking at water, infrastructure, stormwater would be eligible. So I could work with Chase to see what portion of that 150 could be funded through ARPA funds, but that's absolutely something we could do.
Thank you, Karen. And my second one is with respect to the upgrading of the emergency operations center. Any possible tie in there with respect to what we've been through over the past couple of years with the COVID pandemic and also what it is that we want to do in terms of mental health resources in the town? Do either of those or both of them combined have any openings for ARPA funding for part at least of that emergency operations center, do you think?
I can answer that, I can answer that, Karen. I'm not, I'm not sure on that. The, the entire EOC was initially built with federal money. The federal government paid the entire, it was about $800,000 to build it. The, even though it's housed in the police station, it's an emergency operations center. You could, in the event of an actual emergency, you could run our entire infrastructure of the town from there as far as all the departments, the central department heads can all go there. I, I don't know. We could have a sidebar conversation with Lieutenant Caputo on that, but I'm thinking that if that were the case, he's so attentive to grant funding anyway, he would have already been proactive and told us of that before this proposal came forward. But we can, we can double check on that.
Okay, thank you. I, I like the, your use of the term infrastructure because that moves us closer to that possibility. It may not work, but at least we looked at it as you suggest. Any other comments from other board members with respect to any of the bond items? Hearing none, let's invite Chairman Farman back to the meeting.
Um, actually, Arthur.
I'm sorry, I missed your hand.
Had his hand raised. That's okay. Anne Marie does and so do I. I'm last.
I, I can't see them from my screen.
I can't either. I'm only seeing Arthur.
Go ahead, Melinda.
I think, I, if, if it's okay, Mike and Anne Marie work before me. Thank you.
And I don't know if Anne Marie had a response on the last question she wanted to respond to or, or I should just go ahead.
Thank you, Member Zulus. I just wanted to make a recommendation that the board maybe think about not voting this evening until we have the free cash number in case there's some of these items we might wanna move and, and pay with free cash once the free cash number is certified.
I think Karen has a, a thought on that already, which she may wanna help address that for you, Anne Marie, because it's something we discussed today. Karen, you can, oh, sorry, Arthur.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard, finish up.
I just know Karen and I discussed this earlier today. She may have a response to Anne Marie's concern there, but it would be amenable to the board.
And Anne Marie, do we wanna discuss this when Katie has returned?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I heard that Mike Zulus' hand was up and Melinda's hand. I don't know who was first. As I can't see from my screen. Melinda? Anything further from Melinda?
Um, okay, so I just wanted to, I'm very glad that we're getting a free cash number. I was a little concerned when I didn't see one. And, but I was wondering about, similar to, to your point about the, the drainage improvements, wondering if there's anything in the infrastructure bill for that. And I don't know if that, those funds would flow through the state because I, I really have not, not read it. So that's just one question. And I think I'll reserve my other for when we, we do end up voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Arthur. Three questions and then one point. Question one is, Karen, I think you said that the, the debt load is gonna be level, level over last, over last year in terms of the budget hit. Do you, do you have a sense of what, what that amount is? If you don't?
Yeah, so. So from FY '22 to FY '23, our debt went down around $300,000. So as we look at the amount of debt that we're gonna take on, we're not looking at just six, you know, we're not looking at debt of $6 million within the first year because debt is strictly based off of when we issue the bonds for the amount that we think we're gonna spend. As the town authorized us to move forward with a project, we then will look at the cash. As the town authorized us to move forward with a project, we then will look at the cash flow of when that debt would then need to be issued. It's similar to the fire station that the town authorized thirty two million dollars for the fire stations. But we're not spending that all within that one, within that one year. And so as we're looking at lower Gaara fields, we're looking at, you know, what is the cash flow in terms of debt that we'll be bringing on? Because even though we had debt that dropped off in FY twenty three, we still had the fire stations. So when we're looking at a debt service numbers for FY, you know, twenty three, twenty four and out years, we wanted to make sure that it was still around level funded, so we're not taking on additional debt on the operating budget.
Yeah, I, I used the wrong word when I said debt load, I meant debt service, Karen. So, so the debt service is level over last year and approximately how much is it?
So the debt service, the debt service is not, the debt service dropped in FY twenty three by around, between two to three hundred thousand dollars. And so as we take on debt for the fire station, we purchase land at Adam Street. So that additional debt, that additional debt that will be coming on in twenty four, we'd be able to maintain a level funded debt service. So right now, our debt service is around three point seven million dollars.
And that's, so that's going to be level for FY twenty three over FY twenty two?
No, we had, so debt service, we don't pay principal and interest payments when we issue debt in, within the first year. Within the first six months, we pay interest. And so a lot of the debt that we'll be taking on will be hit in FY twenty four. Not so much in twenty three, except for interest, which we've already taken in consideration. So you might have maybe like fifty four thousand, fifty eight thousand dollars that would be interest payments and this is mainly for the fire station in FY twenty three. But the rest of the, the rest of the debt service will hit in FY twenty four. So as the debt drops off, we can take on more debt to make sure that that's still leveled based off of what we have funded in FY twenty two. So we have some savings in FY twenty three.
So we've spread it out, so it's going to be level over FY twenty three, FY twenty four and going forward?
That's correct.
Okay, that was, that was the only question, that was the only, that was the only question.
I thought you were asking, I thought you were asking that question.
That's exactly, that's exactly right. So now what were my other two questions? That, that answer was so good, it was just, oh, I know what the second one was. And that is, and this ties into what Anne Marie mentioned on the free cash. I, I want to know if the, if the interim town administrator had, had considered this, considered this and was signed off on it in the context of the FY twenty three budget. So what I think I heard was we wanted, the interim town administrator may want a little bit of a delay just to see how free cash may play into this. So we can discuss that. One question on the, on the, I had a question on the animal shelter. Oh, I know what it was, on the animal shelter. So, so this will be appropriated in May. Presuming that this is appropriated at the May town meeting, how soon before we can begin that, that site work, do we think?
So I believe what Mr. Ritchie would do is, I, I think, just having understanding being a department head, he'd probably able to, they're probably able to develop the RFP now and start to put it in place. And you could issue it, issue it immediately after the passage of town meeting effective, you know, for July first and want to be ready to go, show we're ready in July, so it's done. I don't think that it would take that long to do this.
Okay, that, that, that sounds great. And, and then, so my comment after that is, i- is if there's no downside to voting this in the context of the entire budget, when we get free cash, you know, it may make sense to, to wait until next week to vote this, to see how the free cash might play into this, but that's, that's, that's a thought, so.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I, I wanted to comment to on what Mrs. Fagan mentioned is that free cash is another funding source. As we look at all of our projects, we're looking at what funding sources we have and how, when those funding sources come available, how we want to allocate, you know, funds to cover, you know, debt, you know, spending out of stabilization, but also looking at one-time items. Free cash is really a tool, i- i- it's a tool, it's, it's a revenue source that should be used, used towards one-time items. It really shouldn't be a practice to use free cash to balance the budget. So I think that, you know, in working with Mrs. Fagan, that we have constantly been thinking about, you know, when we get the free cash numbers, what can we do to make sure that we're allowing the town to be financially stable in terms of replenishing stabilization? What other projects could we possibly fund when that money comes available? So I think I agree with her in terms on, you know, voting the projects when we have all the funding sources available, but if we didn't, at least we have a plan of how we can still continue with these projects without it affecting the operating budget and increases for the town.
Thank you Karen, are there any other questions or comments on the bonding issues?
Stabilize chair, just, I, I'm fine with, we could put this off and vote this next week if you want. There are one or two other things that Karen's worked on today that could change in this, they're not very big, but they're small and they could help, you know, make this a little bit easier. We had nearly ten million dollars in requests this year, and that was only one, twos and threes by the department heads. And to quote one of our senior department heads, Bill Ritchie, who was Karen knows, states so often at capital meetings, the maintenance repair and, and upgrades that we don't do today become replacements at twice the money or three times the money, five or 10 years from now. So I, I just want to thank Karen for being so visionary and looking at so many different avenues this year. And being so patient with our committee, trying to create this, what is before you tonight. But I, I'm, I think Karen, you'll be all right, we can wait and do this next week if the members would prefer. And if, if there's no other comments, I'm fine if you'd invite the chair back.
I came back because I think you've gone, you know, you're no longer just on the bonding. And so thank you very much all, and thank you, Arthur. My comment was going to be on the capital stabilization column. And just to reiterate what I said at the finance committee, I would prefer that free cash be the source of that rather than capital stabilization. It's important for residents of the town, but town meeting members, many of them already, you know, are familiar with the capital stabilization fund. That was created, just like the stabilization fund, really as a rainy day fund and to set aside funds for an emergency. Not just to include in the capital committees' recommendations each year as an alternative to bonding. So if there, if there is a sufficient amount of free cash available, my recommendation is going to be that we not tap the capital stabilization fund and that we use free cash. We won't know that until we get the number certified from the Department of Revenue and until the town accountant and the, yeah, the town accountant and the town administrator are able to finish up their recommendations on the budget. And Ms. Fagan is going to be presenting a current state of the budget later on in this agenda. And, and I just want to remind our board members that the special legislation governing the town administrator gives the town administrator a role in the capital budget. Town administrator is required to make a recommendation on it. And actually, at the beginning of the process, is supposed to submit a proposal to capital improvement planning committee. So I am also in favor of deferring this and
Just in response to that, Madam Chair?
But let me just
Okay, go ahead.
Normally, our free cash number is available in the fall. For a variety of reasons, we're in March and we're still waiting for it to be certified and that's okay, there's been a lot of transition here, but and we're doing some things a little bit differently, which is all to the good. But I think the reason we're not in a position to fully consider the funding sources, and nobody here is talking about not funding some of these items, it's a matter of what's the funding source. The reason it's late is because we don't have the certification yet. So I, I understand from the town administrator, we may have it. End of this week, early next week, there's been a lot of phone calls at the DOR, so it's in process and I think we'll have something very soon on that. Yes, Richard?
I just wanted to comment on, you know, the past five years anyway, and I know Anne Marie just arrived back here. Mr. Denny, he was a regular participant every single capital meeting, even though he's not a voting member. He had, he had great input in every meeting, each and every time we've met over the past five years, so. And I, I believe Anne Marie, my memory as a department, it was Anne Marie was the same during her tenure, so. I hear you loud and clear in that, and Karen, I talked about this in length today, so I think we'll be able to, I think too as well, I think to take money from cap stabilization is Karen so quickly found today would require two, two thirds of a town meeting. So that's another hurdle we're going to try and avoid here.
It's, we can avoid two thirds to get it out and two thirds to put it in, all the better. Okay, so is there anything, if there's nothing else on the capital budget? It's after, we do have Ned Corcoran with us now, and I think we could go back to items eight and nine, if there's nothing else on this item.
The only other items on the CPA ones, but we could defer that, do you want to do that tonight, Karen, or do you want to come back at a later time on that?
I mean, the, for the CPA, it's just looking at funding sources. So as we're looking at capital projects, there were specific projects that are eligible for CPA funds. So although it's not going to be part of the article that we would be put forth in town meeting, but they are projects that when the CPA committee is finally established and looking for project requests, there are projects within the town that we've identified that we would like to for them to be considered. We had two hundred thousand for Andrews Park Field reconstruction project. The town clerk was looking to archive and do preservation of permanent records. And we also had the Milton Yacht Club, there's mason repairs and upgrades. There's window repairs to a historic building. And so we're looking at a hundred and fifty five thousand for a total of three hundred eighty to five thousand that when the CPA committee is looking for project requests, these are projects that the town in working with department heads in the capital committee would like to propose when that time comes.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the CPA request from the capital?
The only thing I'd like to add to that, Madam Chair, is that the historic commission, as Karen knows, weighed in on this, and we've heard this in the past, particularly in the art cup, it's our oldest building. Bill Ritchie's done a lot of work, the only, I will be sending to Anne Marie tomorrow. Power applying for the CPA money is that we need to, we need a needs assessment on the building. And the historical commission provided us an RFP today, I think it's six, or a quote for six thousand dollars. I believe we could take that out of the landing subcommittee money, which we haven't touched, we established that fund two years ago. So I'll be, I'll be sending that to Anne Marie tomorrow. We want that to accompany the request when we go for CPA committee on the, on the twenty five Wall Street building.
Okay, the revolving fund?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there anything else on the capital items?
I just want to thank Karen again for all of her hard work and her late nights and Anne Marie too for jumping right in as soon as she got here with her. It's that time of year as you know, so thank you all.
All right, we're going to come back to finance then after this one week. We have a lot of people here, I think, for the billboard, so let's go back to item eight and then item nine. On our agenda, we can move Mr. Corcoran, we already have Mr. Freitag, why don't we move Mr. Corcoran up to panelist and his client? If they would like. Good evening, Mr. Corcoran.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for indulging my time constraints, I appreciate it. Just come off another Zoom event and it's our life these days.
So we have received from you that revised proposal.
Correct.
Why don't we, why don't we take it in this way, why don't we go through your revised proposal? And as you know, we had a discussion at our last meeting and then like we can open up to the board for thoughts. So why don't we turn it over to you, Mr. Corcoran, and Mr. I believe Richardson from the Flatley Company?
Okay, I'm gonna, if I may, I'll share a screen and hopefully in this case, what I have will come up. I had a glitch an hour ago, so we'll see. So yes, we did submit today, the Flatley Company authorized me to submit a proposal for an alternative. As you know, we were proposing a two-sided billboard, fifty feet tall, located sort of in this corner of the property. One panel facing the southbound side of the expressway, one panel facing to the northbound side of the expressway. We think visible only if you're facing the billboard, given new technology. But the authorized a, an alternative, which would be a single-sided billboard, thirty feet in high, not fifty feet in high, angled to, with this view corridor, to be visible only from the southbound side of the expressway. So if you're driving south, you'll see this at a much lower height, twenty feet lower than it would if you, as currently, as previously proposed. It's the site, and again, the three hundred foot zoning setback on all sides from the site. And proposed location again, thirty feet, three hundred foot radius from that location, five hundred foot radius. Here takes you to the middle of the expressway and the far side of the Nippon City River. And the sign would be constructed as a single-sided thirty feet in height. That's what is being proposed as an alternative. We would appreciate the board's consideration of this as a, as a significant modification to what had been previously proposed. We're still prepared to enter into a substantial agreement with the town relative to upfront payment and revenue sharing. Think it certainly in times of tight budgets and we're always having, and Milton is not, Milton always has tight budgets, so it's new money, we think it's, it's good money. We don't believe that there's any impact and we think it's something that's reasonable for the town to consider going forward. So with that, I'll open it to your questions and, and, and comments and stop the share. I can reshare if you, if you'd like, but.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Corcoran. Why don't we open it up to the board for any comments or questions on either this new proposal or in follow-up to our discussion? We, if I'm remembering correctly, we did not have the discussion, the matter on for a vote at the last meeting. We did schedule for a vote at this meeting. You see Mr. Zulus' hand raised, and we'll go to you first, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Mr. Corcoran and to the Flatley Company for revising the proposal and making an effort to, to, to work with the town here. However, I don't think the proposal solves the environmental concerns that have been raised. I don't think it solves the concerns of the neighborhoods in Milton, and I don't think it solves the concerns of the neighborhoods and the residents of Dorchester. To, to extend the analogy that Ms. Doherty raised in public comment, it, it may be a slightly smaller piece of chocolate cake, but it's still a piece of chocolate cake that, that may not be good for the town to eat here. So my understanding is now, which is different from what my understanding was previously, and I think we all have now heard from town council, that this board now does have authority to disapprove and to deny a permit for such an electronic sign under the Code of Massachusetts regulations. And so that's, that's what I'm prepared to do, is to, is to vote to disapprove or to deny a permit for this electronic sign under the, because of those, because of those concerns that have been raised. And I do appreciate the efforts of the proponent here, I do, I do appreciate the effort to try to make this work, but, but I just don't, I don't think, I don't think this is, I don't think this is the right thing for, for that area and for the town and for our neighbors in Dorchester. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Why, why don't I go to Mr. Freitag and see if he would like to update the board? Perhaps we should have done that earlier. So Mr. Freitag, if you don't mind coming back and joining us. You have sent over some materials regarding the, the Massachusetts regulations and the application form. Why don't you, would you like to speak to this, Mr. Freitag?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. Just a quick recap on what we discussed at the last meeting. Regarding billboards, there are a few sections. Regarding billboards, there are a few sections of Milton bylaws that apply, the first is. In the Milton zoning bylaws, billboards are not allowed in any residential district. Milton also has a sign bylaw which regulates signs that are used in the business districts, but that regulation only applies to signs that advertise services or goods that are sold on premises. Milton also has a general bylaw on billboards which provides prohibitions against billboards that do not meet certain setback requirements. In addition to those local laws, there are also state laws, specifically Mass General Laws, Chapter 93. D, I believe, and a set of regulations at 700 CMR three. That. Regulate, among other things, the permitting of billboard signs and specifically. Regarding electronic billboard signs, which the regulations define as essentially signs that. Are electronic that have lights, but also that have components that move. For instance, the the panel. Billboards that you see in certain on certain areas in 93 that rotate every, I believe it's 10 seconds under the regulations. Those are considered electronic billboards, in any event, regarding electronic billboards, the regulations at 3.17 say that permits for electronic signs require. The prior written approval of the municipality wherein the proposed sign will be located unless otherwise exempted by state law. I don't see any other exemptions by state law that apply here, and that simply leaves the town in a position pursuant to these regs where it can make a determination as to whether or not to approve. The electronic sign, this is separate and apart from the question of whether or not the sign meets and complies with bylaw requirements of the specific town, there are two separate areas in the regulations. There are two separate considerations, and specifically, the issue that that perhaps is before the board right now is this issue of. Whether or not the board will approve and do so thereafter in writing. The the positioning of a electronic billboard, which is what's being proposed, is my understanding, having reviewed both applications in this instance.
Does anyone have any questions for a town council? Any member of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Just one question, because I didn't get to read that, I I take it. Mrs. Zulus did, which is fine, I'm going to. Take him at his word and what he on his on his opinion on this and support it. So if we if we to deny it as. Michael has suggested, are we denying it just on outright denial, or is there a reason for this? Do we have to give a reason?
I'll I'll read the the exact language from, this is section 700, Code of Mass Regulation, section 3.17 one, and it says permits for electronic signs. Require the prior written approval of the municipality wherein the sign, the proposed sign will be located unless otherwise exempted by state law. And I'll ask, right, Mr. Freitag, if he would like to respond to Mr. Wells's question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Wells, the the regulations don't provide any specific guidance on that issue, so I think that 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 issue is simply. Left to the municipalities in a determination whether or not they will give prior, whether or not they will approve the placement of an electronic sign. In their town.
So at at our meeting last week, several of us did state our position on the sign, which was that we were, some of us were not in favor of it, I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. To the matter at hand into the revised proposal, which we now have before us. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I I want to echo Mr. Zulus's thanks. To the Flatley Company for the. The effort to create a proposal that would be. More acceptable, but I I still feel as I did last week that. It just isn't great for this sensitive area for the environment, for neighbors, also, we're just talking about. Putting forth a climate action plan and we're talking about. Great deal of energy usage and light pollution, so I I'm still of the opinion that we should withhold written approval. For this proposal and.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I too. Agree with both of my colleagues, both Mrs. Collins and Mr. Zulus, I think anyone. Who knows me or attends on meetings, especially on the Posit River Landing Committee, which I subcommittee, which I chair. Knows my love of that river and that basin and the history that goes along with it. As our interim town administrator does, whose family grew up in the same neighborhood as my father did, right, Lordville's on that river, so. But, you know, on the top of Mr. Fauntler's building is a beautiful. I want to call it an arboretum, but I could be wrong, sits on the very same, if you've ever been, the top of Two Granite Avenue, there's a beautiful 360 degree panoramic view of the Nippon City Basin. And. You've all heard me talk in the past year or two about our newest occupants of that estuary, which are the American bald eagles, which live there, not. 100 feet, 150 feet from where the site, just on the other side of Granite Avenue behind the Arkham. If in any way, shape or form, I thought this could hurt, how many of them, I think. Would be an injustice, not just to the residents, then everyone who has already articulated their concerns. But to. All the animals and. Creatures that live in that fish and everything else is often knows, it's the number one smell place, smell estuary in these ghosts. That have come back to habitat in that river, so. As I said last week, Madam Chair, anytime someone comes to us with a proposal that could. Help alleviate the budget woes that we struggle with each and every year. And I go back to when you were chair of the Warren Committee and you get up and talk about budget busters at town meeting, they still exist today. And as tempting as that chocolate cake is, I have to agree with my colleagues and oppose this at this time, and I'd be willing to make that in the form of a motion if you accept.
I I wanted to speak also to this, Mr. Doyle has, but so.
I do it just for the purpose of discussion, if you want, just.
Yeah, I I just, I was gonna make a motion as well, I just want to be sure we get the exact language based on them.
I'm fine, I'll 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 withdraw and allow you to make a motion.
All right, so for the reasons I stated at the meeting last week, I'm not in favor of the billboard proposal. I on largely on environmental grounds, but also on the issues raised by our neighbors in Dorchester and. I appreciate the applicant. Revising the proposal, I think in response to concerns that many people raised, and as I said last week, I I think that any. Anytime we have a proposal that would generate revenue, it's something the board has to consider and consider seriously, and we did consider it, and we had quite an outcry of. Commentary from really all over town, I was not a neighborhood in town that I don't think I heard from and probably all of us heard from. Whether they lived in the area or not, who were opposed to this, but in particular, there are neighbors in Dorchester that were also persuasive, so. So I'm gonna move that the select board not approve. The proposed sign, LED sign or billboard at Two Granite Avenue as presented. Do we have any any discussion, any further discussion?
Madam, ma-
Mr. Zulus.
Madam Chair, I just wonder if in the motion and maybe town council can guide us, I wonder if we want to reference the regulation. And say that we're not approving a permit for the LED billboard proposal at Two Granite Ave pursuant to 700 Code of Massachusetts Regulations. 3.17 Subpart one, do we do we want to be that specific in our motion, and that's really a question for you, Madam Chair, you made the motion, also maybe perhaps for town council.
Happy to have the site as, let's ask Mr. Freitag if he thinks there's any other language that's needed.
I think it's appropriate to reference the site, thank you.
So I'm happy to say that the the motion is pursuant to 700 CMR, section 3.17 subsection one.
Madam Chair, just just follow for time, I I don't know whether Michael did or Kevin, someone made mentions chapter 93, what what specific was there? Is there something, I don't know which one of you mentioned it?
I think for 93.
What chapter did you say, Kevin?
It's it's Mass General Laws, Chapter 93D.
I knew it was chapter nine, right, is there anything in there as well that we should cite?
No.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other discussion?
I just want to defer to Mr. Wells on the second, we had a tie there and he has spoken on it beforehand, so I give him that.
I I missed that, Arthur, I'm not.
I was saying the second should be Mr. Wells, as he spoke to the motion beforehand, and we both seconded it simultaneously, so.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, any other, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
I am in favor of disapproval.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so. Thank you to the applicant, I know it's disappointing, but. We appreciate your coming back with a revised proposal and you're taking the time to see if there was a way that you could address some of the concerns that were raised, so thank you for your. For your time this evening.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Richardson, we also scheduled item nine, which is a. Discussion and potential vote if the board is so inclined on applying to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for a sign free area or a sign free corridor for business districts, and I would ask Mr. Freitag to update the board on that issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council, so just to set this up. As you now know and recall, the Milton bylaws prohibit billboards from anywhere in the town of Milton, except the business district, of which there are three. In reviewing the. Regulations regarding billboards, there is a provision which can be found at 700 CMR 3.07. Paragraph 10, which provides as follows, after notice and opportunity for public hearing. The department, that being the Department of Mass DOT in the Office of Outdoor Advertising. May designate areas of historical, architectural, scenic or environmental significance as sign free areas or sign free corridors. No permit shall be granted or renewed for a sign in such sign free areas or such sign free corridors. So on that point, I would offer the following, as we just discussed, there are provisions in the the regulations that provide for municipalities. Require a municipality's written approval regarding. Electronic sites, but there is are perhaps other signs that an applicant might seek a permit for that are not electronic. If the town were to apply to Mass DOT for a sign free area or a sign free corridor. The department could issue a decision after enough, after a hearing. To designate certain areas as sign free areas and sign free or sign free quarters, which it seems to me to be synonymous. In which no sign, electronic or otherwise, could be permitted. Just to add a bit of additional context, there are already in the regs, certain towns that are designated as sign. Where in which the entire town is designated as a sign free area, and specifically those are the town of Lexington, Lincoln, Concord, and then there is a large swath of Boston in the Charlestown District that is also a sign free area, so again, in those towns and in that area. Of Charlestown, no sign, electronic or otherwise, may be permitted. So given the language in this paragraph, subparagraph 10, that speaks to. Areas which have historical, architectural, scenic or environmental significance. It seems that the town may want to avail itself of this process and seek that Mass DOT. Declare that certain areas within Milton be sign free areas. Regarding the area at Granite Ave in that business district, it seems that the regulations that speak, the sections of the regulations that speak to scenic or environmental significance would be pertinent. And perhaps in the business district located in Lower Mills, historical or architectural. Features might rise to a significant level that would justify Mass DOT designating that area as well as a sign free or sign for area or sign free quarter. So having said all that, the the question before the board tonight is whether it would like to make such an application to Mass DOT. That's something that my office would would draft, again, the only areas that are subject to the. Subject to having a billboard placed in it in Milton as of right now. Are your business districts, so there's no concern for. Any other areas that might be, for instance, parkland or residential areas, because your billboard, your billboard bylaw, section nine of the bylaws. Already prohibits signs in those areas, and so does your your zoning by law, so the only question is whether the the board might seek to apply to DOT to have some. Some protection afforded to certain areas, specifically perhaps the the business district at Granite Ave and Lower Mills. To be designated as sign free areas or sign free quarters, it does not appear, I'll just add this last bit, that it does not appear from the the department's website that there is a specific application, so this is something that I would generate by way of. Sort of some consultation perhaps with the Conservation Commission, with the Planning Department and with the. The Office of Inspeccional Services and their building commissioner to sort of pull pieces together to describe the areas that we're discussing tonight and why they would satisfy. This this sort of category of areas of significant historical, architectural, scenic or environmental significance. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them on those on those topics.
Right, thank thank you very much, Mr. Freitag, so we put this on our agenda to see if the board would like to apply to Mass DOT to seek. Sign free corridor for the business districts, and we could authorize town council to submit the application on behalf of the. Of the board or the town, I I see Mr. Doyle's hand raised, and I want to speak to this as well, so Mr. Doyle, why don't I go to you first and then I'll speak after you.
All right, Madam Chair, please.
Okay, I'm just going to offer a motion then, so I I'm gonna move for discussion purposes that. The select board authorized town council to submit on behalf of the town and the select board. An application to the Department of Transportation pursuant to 700 Code of Mass Regulations, section 3.07 subsection 10. For a sign free area or a sign free corridor in Milton's various business districts on grounds of environmental significance in particular, and perhaps any other. Reasons that town council deems relevant. We have a mo, a second.
A second, oh.
Seconded by Mr. Zulus, okay, let's for discussion, let's go to Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And considering all the comments that we have heard over an extended period of town now from the citizens of Milton, as well as. Neighboring populations that we respect. I lean certainly in this direction, I wonder if the wording toward the end of your motion. Might be looked at for a moment to see whether or not the letter S should be added to the word area. Or that it reads sign free area slash areas slash corridor.
I don't remember if I said area or areas, but it was for all all the business districts, so I think the plural is correct.
Okay, then I would ask that the S be added. If that's acceptable to you.
Yeah, the understanding.
Into your second.
Yes. Any other discussion? I'll just reiterate what Mr. Doyle said, I think the board has heard from a lot of different sections of town and largely. Either entirely, all of the commentary has been that there's been a lot of concern about signs, so I I think. Heard from a a lot of residents and have a sense of where the residents are on the issue generally, Mr. Zulus.
Just as a note, Madam Chair, and I think town council alluded to the to to this. While we do have the authority. Under the Code of Massachusetts Regulations for electronic billboards, this action by the board. For a sign free area or a sign free corridor would cover all billboards, electronic or not, so that. To put a point on it is really one of the main imports of this.
Is there any? Is there anything else, Mr. Zulus?
No, oh, I I meant to put my hand down, sorry.
Is there, is there any further comment or question? Anything for Mr. Frytag in particular?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Frytag, and if no other member of the board has a question for Town Council or a comment, then we can go to a vote. All right, we'll go to a vote, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you, everyone, thank you to Town Council for. All of the follow-up work that you've been doing, looking at, uh, the law and getting some clarity for us on these issues. Appreciate it. And and thank you again to Mr. Corcoran and his client, and you're still here as panelists with us. Appreciate your time this evening and. And at prior meetings. I think this brings us, we we handled number eight and number nine, I think this now brings us back to item thirteen on our agenda. I'm just going to take a look and see if there's anything else that we need Mr. Frytag for. If not, we could let you go, Mr. Frytag. Perhaps with this, is there anything you wanted to speak to us on the zoning articles, Mr. Frytag? No, okay.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, then, um. And I think we can go on with the rest of our agenda in the order that it is, and thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Frytag.
You're welcome.
Mr. Zulus?
Ma- Madam Chair, I was just going to say, there may be a a question for. Mr. Frytag on on one of the zoning articles. And and maybe it doesn't need to be answered tonight, but there may be a question, a procedural question. On that, uh, with respect, particularly with respect to article two, the, um, accessory dwelling, uh, unit article. So I don't know if you want to take that out of order, I I don't want to, I don't want to, uh. Interfere with the flow of the meeting, so we can do it another time, but there may be a question on that.
Right, what's the sense of the board?
Uh, Chair, it won't Town Council be there Tuesday night, I mean Monday night? For the Monday night meeting?
My meeting, yes.
Oh, for the Monday night pre the Select Board meeting prior to Town Meeting?
Uh, prob- probably. Because we'll be in.
I understand, it's speed of time, let them go, maybe we could. Maybe, um. We could take care of Mr. Zulus's question that night.
Well, unless it's something that he wants us to consider this evening. Let's see, that's item sixteen, why why don't we, uh? Why don't we go to item sixteen just for that one article and we'll come back to it for the other articles, because I'd also like to give Karen Preval an opportunity to head out if she'd like to. Okay, so why don't we move it, move up? Head to item sixteen and we'll talk specifically regarding matter two and Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, item, um. Sixteen-two on our agenda is article two for, uh, Town Meeting. The current, and this is the accessory dwelling unit article, the proposal by the planning department to amend the. Zoning bylaws for the purposes of, um, providing for accessory dwelling units. Uh, the current recommendation from the. Uh, Warrant Committee, uh, for that article is to remand it. It's my view that, um, the article that has been vetted and approved by the Planning Board and the Town Planning Department. Is an article that deserves support and should be approved. And so the question is, since since the Warrant Committee has currently, um, recommended remanding it for further study. Whether we as a board want to propose to amend that recommendation. So that the town vote to amend the bylaws. As submitted by the Planning Board, so in other words, um, do we as a body? Want to amend, it's and it's my view, I would propose. That we that we submitted amendment to the Town Town Moderator. To amend the recommendation for Town Meeting. So that the vote would be to amend the bylaws as submitted by the Planning Board. So that that issue is raised with Town Meeting rather than the issue of, well, whether we remand it. The issue of of whether this this, whether the the bylaws should be amended. As as proposed by Planning Board and Planning Department, whether that should be done. My view is it should, my view is it's a good proposal, it's been vetted. It's, um, it's something that, um, respects the rights of homeowners. To have the freedom to do what they want, uh, more freedom to do what they want with their homes. It is is something that, um, provides an opportunity, another option. For seniors, um, who are being priced out of our town, for seniors to, uh, have some housing options. And it's a proposal that, um, that provides some additional housing options. In a town that has serious housing shortages and so. And it also seems to me that this is not any kind of a radical proposal, it's a very moderate proposal. That is capped at at ten such, uh, units per year as of right. And so my view is that this is a proposal that's measured in response to some critical needs in town and it should deserve our support. Question is how to, if we want to acknowledge that support, if we want to support it in that way. And how we would do that procedurally, my thought is we we propose an amendment to the the, um, recommendation in the warrant. To, uh, support the the article as drafted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
But why don't we go to Mr. Frytag to answer that question and then, um, and then I'm sure members would like to weigh in on that. They all have thoughts on. Whether we want to do that, but let's get the legal question first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Kevin Frytag to the Office of Town Council. Just to set this up, the rules that we follow for Town Meeting are are set forward in in the the rules for Town Meeting that the town contains that are that are part of our. Our town's, um, bylaws. They don't speak to this specific procedural issue, but they do, uh, sort of incorporate by reference Town Meeting Time, which is a. A treatise that has been used throughout the common law for some time regarding how town meetings are conducted. And late this afternoon, I had a chance to speak with our Town Moderator, Bob His, about this specific issue, and the question is whether. Sort of describing the the nature of a motion to. Refer. And Town Meeting Time does address motions to refer. They are, um, motions that need a a majority to be successful. They are motions that can be debatable, they are also motions that can be amended. However, what was surprising to me to see today was that. The scope of the. Amendment to a motion to refer is quite limited. And Town Meeting Time suggests that the only thing that you can amend regarding a motion to refer is. The party or the the place to which the motion is being sent. And then also perhaps. Amend. For the 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 number of individuals within, for instance, if it were going to be sent back to the Planning Board. The number of individuals within the Planning Board that might review it. Or some other. Issues that really are specific to. Where the motion is, where the article is to be sent back to be reconsidered and. I think even perhaps h- how long it is to be reconsidered by that that group before returning to Town Meeting. So that is. A a long explanation that. Brings me to the conclusion that a motion to defer cannot be amended into a. A positive. Motion regarding the underlying article, that is to say, we couldn't. I I I don't think it would be permissible to have a motion to amend. A a recommendation to refer into a motion to amend the zoning bylaw as set forth in the article. That being the case, I think the way that this would potentially play out at Town Meeting is as follows, if. The recommendation as written in the warrant. Presently is to refer. If that is the recommendation at Town Meeting, then as is always the case, that recommendation becomes the first motion before the. Body of Town Meeting. If that motion. Is not successful. Then there would be essentially no motion before the body at that time and the time and the Town Moderator would then look to Town Meeting. To a Town Meeting Member to propose a motion. At which time, a motion like. The motion that Mr. Zulus has just mentioned would be entirely appropriate and and could be made to the moderator. And in fact, would it would be prudent to deliver that motion to the moderator in advance of Town Meeting. As is the practice of our Town Moderator regarding any. Amendments of any sort of nuance or or complexity, so. I hope that provides some clarity, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anything further for Kevin on on the procedural issue? Mr. Zulus?
So ju- so just to be clear, if this board wanted to signal its support. For this article. It would vote to. It would vote to, um, vote no. With respect to the motion to to, uh, refer. And then it would make a motion after that. To amend the bylaws as submitted by the by the Planning Board. And and you're suggesting, Kevin, that 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 motion, should this board decide it wants to do it, that motion should be submitted. To the moderator prior to Town Meeting.
Yes, to to both of those questions, Mr. Zulus, that's right.
Is there anything else on the procedural issue, Mr. Wells, because I I want to speak to the procedural issue as well, Mr. Wells?
How do we make a motion? And perhaps vote on a motion before Town Meeting, you mean, so this board makes a motion. And votes on it as up, what do we tell the moderator before Town Meeting begins, is that what you're saying, Kevin?
What I'm suggesting is that if the motion refer is not successful, then the Town Moderator would look to a member of Town Meeting to make a motion. To to act on the article in some way. And if it is any members intended the Select Board that the, uh, that the article. That the motion be to amend the bylaw as set forth in the article. Then that member could propose that motion to the moderator in advance so that he'd have it and be ready to show it to Town Meeting. At at the time of, um, at the time the motion is made.
Just one more thing, Madam Chair, and then I'll, oh, oh, and you can. I take it, so then Michael's proposal is to. You'd want to then make a motion. To support the majority vote of the Planning Board. What that last vote was on this, correct?
Wha- what I'd want to do is is my motion, if I make it, would be. For this board not to support. The recommend, current recommendation of the Warrant Committee.
Yeah.
Well, and if that is not supported for this board. For this board to make a motion. To, uh, approve the article as drafted by the by the Planning Board and to submit that motion. To the the Town Moderator, um, in advance of Town Mo, in advance of Town Meeting.
So you want to take that vote tonight and then it goes to him beforehand?
Yeah, I mean, I think he likes to have those motions.
I got it, I get that.
Friday, so that's the thought.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, thank you.
You're welcome, I'm going to start raising my hand occasionally to signal that I want to speak to something because I don't always get a chance to. So I think we should just think about the fact that. You know, the Warrant Committee has has voted this recommendation, they voted it before the Planning Board's public hearing on February eighth, which was a surprise to me, normally the Warrant Committee waits until the Planning Board has a public hearing before they take any kind of action. I watched the Warrant Committee meeting Monday night, I know Mike and Arthur were there for the Select Board articles, at the end of that meeting. Some of them expressed the desire to reconsider this recommendation. They're meeting Monday evening, um, it's entirely possible, Warrant Committee's done this many times in the past, that they may have a revised recommendation on Monday evening, we won't know that until Monday evening. I would suspect that the Planning Board may also be thinking along the lines because it's their article after all, not our article, but, uh, you know, we have a. The Town Administrator and I will be on a call with the Moderator and the Warrant Committee folks tomorrow, just in in the Planning Board chair, I'm sure to, um, just. Prepare for the annual Town Meeting, so I I I'm curious as to whether the Planning Board might already be. Planning to, uh, not only oppose the Warrant Committee recommendations, since the Planning Board is in favor of this article. Um, and I know there's talk about majority minority, you know, practice in Milton is once there's.
I got it, no, I hear that, I get it.
Board, no, I don't mean you, Mr. Wells, I've heard this in other meetings. So so I I'd be curious to see what the Planning Board may be taking, doing, given that it's their article and not our article, but. I I want to bring those two things out, that it's possible the Warrant Committee may have a revised recommendation and this is not our article, it's the Planning Board's. So that's that's my two cents. Do we have any other procedural questions for Mr. Frytag? All right, if not, I saw somebody's hand, I don't know who that was. Melinda, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh. So I I. I understand that it's the Planning Bar- Board's article, but it is an integral part of the Housing Production Plan. And, um, the Select Board's Housing Committee, um, did did, um. Make a statement for, uh, to the Planning Board on this, so I I am in favor of, um. Making sure in some way that this, the article is considered at Town Meeting. I I I do like the idea of making sure that the moderator. Has this before, um, Town Meeting, that is the practice, and I I think it's a good one. But I'd be. Happy to think about rather just, uh, sending in a statement. To the Warrant Committee for their meeting on Monday, perhaps if. Your discussion, um, tomorrow. Seems as if that that would be the better course, so I I'm not sure what we do about that because we have to decide it today, so. You know, I think we have to choose, choose an a a path.
Yeah, this is the time, this between this meeting and Monday night's meeting before. You know, at six thirty, assuming, assuming that's the time we choose, those would be the times that the board would have an opportunity to discuss it and take an action. So any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Well, if it if it pleases the Chair, I I'd like to, I'll 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 make a motion.
What is the motion?
And and primarily because of the timing issue and I I I and I agree with you, Madam Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to see what the. What the Planning Board would do and what the what the and what the Warrant Committee would do, but, um, but my concern is if, um. If they don't do, uh, that, then we may lose the opportunity if we don't provide such a motion prior to Town Meeting and so. So i- i- I'd like to. I'd like to have this as much as a placeholder of i- is anything else, if if the other, if the Warrant Committee. Changes their recommendation, then it'll be obviated, if the Planning Board decides to do it, it'll be obviated, but but I'd like to have it in place, and so I'll make a motion. For the Select Board to oppose the current recommendation of Article Two. And to propose a motion to amend, uh, chapter ten of the general bylaws as submitted by the Planning Board as art in Article Two.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question.
Wells, yes.
One question, Madam Chair, just, uh, I'm thinking strategically the way you are. You know, and I I'm prepared to vote in the affirmative with Mr. Zulus. On his recommendation, um. Just wondering if we should hold this until Monday to let the Warrant Committee just have one more. I I don't know, I I, you know, I don't have a draw, I'm all set, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, any other discussion? I I intend to vote no on the motion and I'll state my reasons for voting no. I think if this were a Select Board article and another elected board were to take a position ahead of the board that submitted the article, I I would not be too happy about that, so on procedural grounds, I. Would prefer to hear what the Warrant Committee might say Monday night and what the Planning Board might say Monday night, I understand Mr. Zulus's point about. The timing issue and wanting to submit something in writing. I am planning to sit down this weekend and read the language of this article closely, I have been at every Planning Board meeting since they started talking about this, I've been on their Zooms. There's been a lot of revisions to the article, there's been a lot of debate, I've heard from a lot of people on both sides of this, and this is an article where I have. A lot of respect for people on both sides and and I encourage both sides of this debate. As it was going through the fall and the winter months to try to reach a compromise and to come in with a with a recommendation for an accessory dwelling unit article where we could have broad support instead of. Really the divisive view that we have today where we have people really rooted in two different corners. We have a citizens group that submitted an article for the annual Town Meeting and we have this article, and I think there was a compromise between the two of them somewhere, I'm. Closer to this article than I am to the citizen article for May, but. There's also been a lot of talk about the ten-unit cap and I want to see. What the what Warrant Committee and what the Planning Board might do on Monday night and. And I'm I'm still going through this. Article in my head and and others may have reached a recommendation ahead of me and that's fine, I I respect that and appreciate that, but. I'm planning to sit down and go through the exact language and formulate a position on it over the weekend. But I'm planning to sit down and go through the exact language and formulate a position on it over the weekend. Again, I'm I'm hopeful that there would have been a better compromise, and maybe there's still time for there to be some kind of a grand compromise. But it doesn't seem to be the case. So that's, those are my reasons that I'm going to vote no on the motion, but I understand the timing issue. Mr. Wells?
Well, you articulated what I wanted to say, and I, I just, I agree with you. You know, I do support so, but I do believe at the time of the next two days, we should take, there has been so much back and forth, give and take on this. I may change my mind on Monday, but at this time, I'm going to support your, your position on this.
Ms. Collins? I don't know who was first. I think Ms. Collins, but it's hard to see your hand raised sometimes, Mike, because of your background, so.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we go to Ms. Collins first and then Mr. Zulus?
Well, I I will just say, I, I really, I do like the idea of submitting this just so that it's in place and it gets a fair hearing in town meeting. I'm also concerned that we have two members who are not, I don't want to say fully supportive because that's not really what I mean, but have real pause about doing anything before Monday. So I'm very torn at this point because if we did that and then, you know, would we be taking another vote on on Monday if the warrant committee still leaves its recommendation to refer back?
Mr. Zulus?
The only thing I will say is if we don't do this prior to the time to submit motions to the moderator, then we may lose the opportunity. And so while we can change our view on Monday, if we don't do this now, we could lose the opportunity. And and if no other body does it, then we could lose the opportunity to do it. So that if, so if we, if we support this article, it seems to me we need to take some action to support it, to make sure that we'll have the opportunity to do so at town meeting.
Mr. Wells and then Mr. Doyle.
I just, my question is, why do we need to do it tonight, though? Could we not, could we not do this Monday?
The only reason, Richard, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
The moderator asks for motions prior to, I think it's Friday is the deadline he usually has. He likes to have motions in writing and amendments in writing prior to. So we could do it Monday night, but then we won't have given him a motion prior to town meeting, which is his practice. So this is an effort to try to, to try to make sure we have the opportunity to make the case and to, to express our view and also to be, to be mindful of the procedure of the town moderator.
But could, would it be possible to have the chair at least tell the moderator tomorrow what we're considering and that we would potentially be voting something of this type on Monday? I, I, I mean, Katie's devoted much more time to this than I have. But understanding the history of how things work and just looking at the overwhelming dialogue, emails, letters, back and forth, I could see this getting to town meeting as isn't just dying and being sent back another year before you get to it. So I, if we could wait till Monday, I'd, I'd really be a lot more comfortable. My pause, as Mrs. Collins said, would not be as great, so. That's why I just wonder why we couldn't wait until Monday, even if we, could we meet Monday morning and do it? And have it to a Monday morning? Like, I just. What is the warrant committee meeting, Katie? I didn't hear again when you said the warrant committee was meeting.
Monday evening. They're meeting tonight, but it's not on their agenda tonight. They did bring it up at the end of their Monday night meeting, but that was not enough time for them to amend their agenda. So they're meeting Monday night. Any other discussion? Mr. Doyle?
Hey, Madam Chair. My question, for which I had my hand raised earlier, has been answered. I just have one thought, and that is whether or not we could provide a consensus and have that consensus conveyed to the town moderator with Mr. Zulus' motion so that he is indeed informed, sort of in a semi-official manner, as to the direction in which the select board is going. And the select board could then, on Monday, whether it's in the morning, as someone suggested, or later in the evening, affirm one way or the other the motion. Mike, would that be acceptable to you, to convey a consensus?
Were you suggesting that we give a motion in writing, Arthur, and say that? So we would give the motion in writing. We would say, we think there's a consensus on this, but we'll get you the final answer on Monday night? Is that the idea?
That's correct.
I mean, you know, I would, I would be fine with that. Again, if we, I guess if we have something in the hands of the, of the, of the town moderator by his deadline, I, I guess that would be fine. I, I, I still, I don't know if that solves Katie's issue. I don't think we're going to get a consensus using this procedure because I think Katie still wants to, my, my, my sense was that she isn't prepared to, to, to take that action. So I don't know that we'll have unanimity. But I would certainly be, I would certainly be comfortable if we had something in the hands of the town moderator and if we had a vote. I don't know what the vote would be other than our, to think about it because the vote would be to, I guess the vote would be to oppose the current recommendation of the warrant committee and to submit to the town moderator a proposed motion if the, the recommendation is defeated.
So so let me just state, you know, I heard a clear majority express a preference to vote tonight. I haven't formulated or finalized my position in this article, so that's, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to be there tonight. I'm happy to go to a vote since we have a majority that wants to take a vote. I, I think that's, that's fine. I'm, I don't mind standing out on my own or with Richard or for three to two or four to one. That's fine with me. I just wanted to state my reasons for why I was not going to support the motion tonight, but I don't see any reason not to have a vote. Mr. Wells and then Mr. Collins.
My question to you. Melinda, go first. I'll go after. Go ahead, Melinda.
Okay.
You had the add up first.
Oh, thank, thank you. So what, what I think I heard Mr. Doyle saying was that we could send it and, and tell the moderator that we would let him know Monday evening the outcome of whether we have a consensus on the board and would be exercising that. Is that, is that what you were saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so it's, it's really just putting, putting the motion in his hand so he has it just in case Monday we come to a consensus and say, yes, we'd like to act on it.
Mr. Wells? And then Mr. Zulus?
So I am worried. I am worried that if there is not, and I, I appreciate Michael's motion. And I am worried that I agree with Katie, just knowing how town meeting works. I am worried if there's not some type of consensus. I know procedurally we can do this. This is not some type of compromise, some type of something worked out between now and Monday. I truly worry if this passes, no matter what we do. So that's why I'm hesitant to vote. I'm fine with telling the town moderator, but I'm, I, I'm far more comfortable with using whatever time is available the next two days to try and get these parties to reach compromise. So we all know how town meeting works. I mean, you create a card, you question this and that. Next thing you fill a whole, you fill a whole night, then another whole night, it goes back to conference to begin with them. I think compromise is the best way to, to achieve what Mr. Zulus has articulated as far as meeting the need in this town.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what you meant, Rich, about the next two days. I'm not, I'm, I'm hopeful that we might have some consensus on the floor at town meeting. I'm not confident of it, given where the planning board discussion has been. I heard a clear majority of this board wanting to go to vote. I have no problem taking a vote on this tonight. And, you know, for the record, I was chair of the warrant committee when I had to get up and speak in favor of something that I personally had voted against. So that, it happens, but I'm happy to have a vote on this tonight if that's what the majority of the board wants to do. Mr. Zulus?
So, so the motion, I think, is, is currently to oppose the current recommendation of the warrant committee and to move to, to move, if that recommendation is defeated, to move a town meeting to recommend that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws as submitted by the planning board. That's the current motion. I think it's important to move forward in that way at this time because if we just give, if, if our, if our motion is, let's give the town moderator a piece of paper, but it doesn't really mean anything. What is he to do with that? He could easily say, this isn't a motion. It's not really being submitted. I just got a piece, piece of paper that people are saying, well, they won't know till Monday night. So I, I, I think if we support the, if we support the, the proposal of the planning board and the town planning department, I think we should, I think we should, I think we should do it. And I think this is the way to do it, and I think this is the, is the, is the way to ensure that it gets a hearing at town meeting. And so, so I'd like to move forward with the motion because I think it's important in order to protect that, in order to ensure that this, that this viewpoint is, is heard and discussed at town meeting. And we can always pull it back. Anyway, sorry.
Sorry. And it's all moot if the warrant committee comes in with a revised recommendation. So, you know, or the planning board trumps us, you know. Yeah.
Are they meeting again? Is the, the planning board the same as us?
They're meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if this is on their agenda, but they're also meeting Monday. Yeah, and, and just for the record, it's the second part of Mr. Zulus' motion. I, I don't have any opposition to the first part of that motion. I mean, I, as I said, I think the warrant committee acted prematurely here before the planning board had their public hearing. So, all right, is there any further discussion? Because it's 9:40 and we still have a lot on the agenda. Then why don't we go to a vote on Mr. Zulus' motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, no. Okay, thank you all. That may be all we need you for tonight, Kevin.
If I may, Madam Chair, would you like me to convey this vote as well as the proposed motion to the moderator?
Yes, I don't see why not.
Okay. I will, I will do so, then I will copy you on my email to the moderator on that point.
Thank you very much.
And we have a, we have a writing, Kevin, that we can, that we can send. It may, it may need to be massaged a little bit, but we have a writing that we can submit as well.
So if, Mrs. Zulus, if I may, if the recommendation is to simply track the article, I actually already have, I've, I've drafted that already.
Great.
I, I can send, I can send it along to you just to, to take a peek at, but it's going to just say to recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw as, and then repeats the article language in full.
And this will just say that the, 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 the select board is making that motion.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go back to item 13, which is the finance committee's report. We're going to talk about the budget and ARPA, and I'm hoping we can get through this somewhat quickly. Mr. Zulus is the chair of the finance committee, but we, we have Ms. Fagan and Ms. Prevail here. And I, I know Ms. Fagan has a PowerPoint that she's going to put up to give us a high level view of where we're at on the budget right now. So, Mr. Zulus, unless you want to add anything, why don't we go directly to Ms. Fagan?
Happy to go directly to Ms. Fagan.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ms. Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, I just want to stress, this is a preliminary fiscal 23 budget presentation. And I'd first like to thank Finance Director Karen Prevail and Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs Amy Dexter for their, their assistance and collaboration on this budget process. And I just want to outline a brief overview of the process, as I understand it. The preparation of the fiscal 23 annual operating budget began in November of 2021, which involved multiple meetings with department heads, the town finance director, and the former town administrator. Department heads are asked to submit level dollar rollover budgets with contractual increases where applicable, as well as a supplemental budget to reflect the amounts needed to run their departments efficiently. This preliminary budget presentation presents a level funded budget along with any contractual obligations. This presentation does not take into effect or the account of the use of free cash because that's not certified yet, or ARPA funding opportunities. So I know we have a, a long agenda still to go, so I will be brief in this presentation. The first page is the proposed budget, and you will see the fiscal 22 actuals and the fiscal 23 proposed budget. I just want to highlight a few sections of this proposed budget. And one of them is the group insurance. The town, through its prudent management of the health plans, were able to commit about half a million dollars under budget for fiscal 23, which I think is a huge plus on trying to balance this budget. Also, the other departments I'd like to highlight is the reduction in unemployment. I asked Ms. Prevail to do a five-year analysis on unemployment. And we were, we, we came to the conclusion that the unemployment number was low enough that we felt comfortable reducing it from 100,000 to 80,000. We also reduced the reserve fund, again, looking at the five-year analysis. We reduced the reserve fund from 250 to 200,000. So the total proposed preliminary budget for fiscal 23 is 120,884,786. Next slide, please. I just want to highlight some of the general government numbers and the variance between 22 to 23. The accounting department is a, a small reduction due to the salary reduction for the finance director. The, the major increase in the town government side is the election and registration budget. And that is due to the fact that we have three elections next year. And those elections are very costly now that we have early voting. Really puts a strain on that budget. The other information technology, information technology has, has increased because of the software support and the licenses that he needs to operate with. Next slide, please. This is a slide of the projected revenue summary for the town. You will see the property tax, new growth, debt exclusion, special purpose debt stabilization, and the legally obligated medical expenses come in at 94,514,067, which is a variable increase of 3.5%. Local receipts are 6.1%. Indirect costs and enterprise bank transfer at a 4%. State aid, I want to highlight that state aid is 8.8% increase. That is due to the increase in the chapter 70 state aid of approximately $1 million. And the available funds is negative 85.3%. So the total revenue summary is 120,543,848. Next slide shows you the local receipts, the three-year average, the fiscal 22 projected, and the fiscal 23 projected. And that total is an increase of $313,147. See that the largest local receipt is the motor vehicle. That's, that's our biggest revenue source and license and permit. And license and permits, um, come in very strong as well, and trash and recycling fees. Next slide, please. So this is the budget summary. The, the revenues available and the fiscal twenty-three budget expenditures would leave us at this current point in time, and again, it's just a snapshot of this point in time, at a deficit of three hundred forty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Again, I just want to stress that we don't have free cash certified yet, and we haven't taken into consideration, um, the, any use of the ARPA funds. So we will continue to work on this budget, um, and hopefully, at our next meeting, be able to have our free cash certified and be able to move this shortfall. So if there's any questions, anybody?
First, thank you very much to Anne Marie Fagan and to Karen Prevell, and Amy Dexter, who I know are working very closely on this budget. And as, as everyone knows, Anne Marie Fagan's only been back for a couple of weeks with us. And, um, I think it's done a, just yeoman's work and, and an enormous amount of getting into the weeds on this budget in a short period of time. So, given that it's March ninth and we're looking at a proposed shortfall of less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's going to be welcome news to the warrant committee and I'm sure to all of the, all of us and all of the other elected boards. So, so thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this. Does any member of the board have any questions for the town administrator? Or comments? Anything from the finance committee? And I know you're meeting on Friday. Okay, then, um, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this preliminary fiscal twenty-three budget, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. And why don't we go on to thirteen, the ARPA funding? That we have some recommendations from the finance committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the, the first are the recommendations that we, we first saw, um, two weeks ago. And these relate to the, um, the, um, application process for the ARPA Small Business Assistance Grants. The, um, the only change, there are two changes. One is the application has been vetted by town council. There have been some, um, minor changes, nothing major. Those changes have been made and they've been incorporated in the draft that was sent around today. Uh, and then the, the, um, finance committee subsequently voted to extend the review period from April thirtieth through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. So that's, that was the one, uh, vote, the finance committee. And the other vote was to include in the application, um, a total amount of ARPA funding used for, for a small business, a gr- small business assistance grants, uh, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, with individual business assistance grants up to fifty thousand dollars. Those are the two votes that, um, that the finance committee made on February seventeenth and that were first, um, first discussed here, uh, two weeks ago.
Okay. Any questions for the finance committee, or would anyone like to offer a motion?
Motion, Madam Chair, to approve the, uh, recommendation of the finance committee. Why do we want a recommendation on the F twenty? No, we don't want a recommendation on the budget. So you just want a recommendation of ARPA, correct?
We just want ARPA.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the finance committee on ARPA disbursements, as recommended tonight.
Is that on the, on the, the small business?
Yes, yes.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, um, any discussion? I thought town council offered some good comments on the grant application form. If there's no discussion, uh, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, at, at, at the finance committee meeting last Friday, on March fourth, the finance committee took three actions. First, uh, recommended to the select board that sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents that had been allocated to the health department for contact, contact tracers, booster clinics, um, and, um, and some additional support, that that be reallocated, um, for the purpose of hiring a full-time community social worker for FY twenty-three, and that the select board appropriate up to an additional seventy-five hundred dollars from town-provided ARPA funding, so that the total amount for that community, uh, social worker, a full-time community social worker for FY twenty-three be seventy thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. The, the estimate from, uh, Carolyn Cancela for this item, uh, was seventy thousand dollars. And so, and so the effort here was to reallocate some funds that had been appropriated to the health department and to add the additional amount that was needed, so we could meet that priority.
Make a motion for, oh, sorry, Arthur's got it, sorry.
Thanks, Richard. Um, Madam Chair is going to move that the select would reallocate sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents in town-provided ARPA funds previously appropriated, used by the health department to be used by the department to hire a full-time community social worker for FY twenty-three, and that the select would appropriate up to an additional seventy-five hundred dollars from town-approved ARPA funding for that purpose, for a total of seventy thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, the, the select board voted to appropriate eight thousand dollars, uh, for the council on aging from ARPA funding, but I don't see this on the agenda. So we may have to, I don't see this reference on, on the...
The public agenda, during cases, there, but not...
I have the public agenda. It's not on the public agenda, Madam Chair.
Council on Aging one?
Council on Aging, okay. So let's defer the Council on Aging.
All right. So we'll, we'll defer that one, uh, and perhaps, perhaps we could take it Monday night if, if, uh, if the chair and the town administrator...
Let's, let's, let's make a note to tomorrow to get, add that to the agenda for the fourteenth.
Um, and then third, the, the, um, pardon me, the finance committee voted to recommend that the select board appropriate up to five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars from Norfolk County provided ARPA funding for the following FY twenty-three capital, uh, projects. The Lower Guile Field Reconstruction Project, the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. The Town Hall Chiller Plant Replac- Replacement, which is an HVAC, an amount of hundred and ten thousand dollars, and upgrades to, pardon me, to the HVAC system in the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, for a total of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars.
A- and I guess I just wanted a question, since we didn't vote on the capital budget, and these relate to the capital budget. Is there any concern with voting on this tonight? Maybe not.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, uh, and Karen, you can jump in. Karen Prevell and, and, um, town council have been conversing to how the language should appear on the warrant, because there'll be numerous, several funding sources of other capital projects. But Karen, I just, I didn't know your hand was up. I thought you can articulate on that more if you want.
Ms. Prevell?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to mention that with the ARPA funds is a process. So if there are portions of projects that are funded through ARPA, we have to submit an application to the Norfolk County. They're taking a couple of weeks, probably two to three weeks before they respond in terms, um, of funding. So I would, um, recommend, if it's something you'd like to move forward with ARPA funds, that, that something be approved. That way we can move forward with submitting those to the county, um, tomorrow.
Okay. Mrs. Zulus?
And, and I would say, um, to the concern, Katie, about, you know, is this something that, um, if we don't go forward on the other things, we can always undo this. We can always, if, 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 if we are in the application process, we can withdraw the application. If it's already been approved, uh, which likely won't, given the timing before town meeting, uh, but if it was, we could un, we could undo it. We could, we could reappropriate it. So I, so I don't think there's any downside.
I just look at the scheduling. I think that's right. Mr. Doyle?
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Zulus, Madam Chair, uh, say that I interpreted your reading of this as being a motion. If that was your intent, I will second.
Yes. I'm not sure if it was my intention, but I'll, I'll take it.
There is a motion seconded by Mr. Doyle. Is there any discussion on the motion? Lynn, do you have a question?
I do. Can you just repeat the motion for me? I want to make sure I have it right. I'm sorry.
Yep. Um, uh, a- a- and, and I have it in writing for you, Lynn. Uh, I could, it's, it's in what I sent today, but, uh, it, it was, uh, the motion...
I'll find it.
Is, is that the select board appropriate, appropriate up to five hundred and fifty-four thousand from the Norfolk County-provided ARPA, ARPA, ARPA funding, and I left out the word "funding" in this draft, for the following FY twenty-three capital projects? And then it lists the three capital projects.
I- it's up to five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, right? You just...
Did I, did I misstate that? Yeah, sorry.
Add the one hundred, so it's just five, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred.
You gotta watch me when it gets, uh, gets...
I already know. I just looked up. It's nine fifty-nine.
So let's, let's have a vote. Mr. Doyle? Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. We're done with number thirteen. We're on to fourteen. Uh, briefly, on the animal shelter update, I, I heard, so I know there's already been discussion tonight about the, the bonded aspect of the, um, project. So, um, Mr. Wells has already covered that. At the last meeting, I, I put this on the agenda mainly because the Animal League, not, not our advisory committee, but the Animal League representatives have raised the issue of whether the Governor Stoughton property, which is where the animal shelter currently sits, should be reconsidered as the home for the animal shelter. Everyone in this board knows that the board has worked, been working toward potentially affordable housing at that site. And the Council of the Animal Shelter Act, when, when I responded to a couple of emails explaining to the Council of the Animal League, which is Marion McGettrick, whether, um, this was under consideration. I reported back to her it was not, and has not been for the last seven years since the MOA was signed. And the plan has been for Randolph Avenue off the access road. And the Governor Stoughton trustees have been looking at a different purpose for the remaining four acres of the Governor Stoughton site. She asked if I was speaking on behalf of the whole board, and I told her the board would have to, the Governor Stoughton trustees would have to take that up at a future meeting if we wanted to reconsider it. At the last meeting, um, it was pretty clear that the committee itself is working towards the Randolph Avenue site. So I'm just bringing this up for informational purposes for our board to know that this idea has been floated by the Animal League. And, um, it's something that if, if the committee asks us to consider, or if the board members wish to consider, we could put it on a future agenda for the Governor Stoughton trustees meeting. But, um, that's really just an update to keep everybody informed as to what the, what a suggestion has been from the Animal League. Otherwise, the members of that committee are working towards getting further information on module or construction and engaging Paul Hogan as the project manager. Again, his town council's working with Mr. Zawinski on that issue. And I, I think, unless Ms. Collins has anything to add from meeting, the animal shelter meeting, I think that's pretty much the, uh, the sum of where things are at right now, in addition to what Mr. Wells has mentioned about the bonding issue. So if there's, unless there's any questions, we can go on to reappointing the animal shelter advisory committee members. We do have a vacancy on this committee, um, but we have six members to be re, seven members to be re, no, six to be reappointed.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Alyssa Cook, Daniel Daly, Terri Stedman, Wayne Ritchie, John Sheldon, and George DeGais.
Second.
Seconded. Uh, all in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We also have appointments to the Education Fund Committee, also known as M-Pace.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to, this is appoint to reappoint.
Initial appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Yawa Degbo.
Second.
Okay. And I'll mention, this is a referral from the school committee, uh, superintendent, indicated to Susan Brid- Suzanne Bridges in the office that, um, that she would be a good addition to this committee and has a background in the arts. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. They were back to sixteen. We've already talked about Article Two. Is there any discussion tonight on any of the other three articles? We have not voted positions on any of them. We, we did vote to submit Articles Three and Four. If there's any discussion on Four, because there's a bonding aspect to it, I'll recuse myself from it, or we could take that up Monday night. But, uh, the memory care zoning or the liquor license, home, home petition are also on the warrant. Is there any desire to, um, discuss any of these? Mr. Wells?
One question, one item, Madam Chair, and actually, Mr. Zulus might be able to answer. On the exchange, item I, home petition, the exchange of the conservation land. This was only, this was asked to be one of the PAC's personnel the other day.
That's, Richard, that's on the annual, annual town meeting?
Oh, okay. Oh, good then. All right. Just forgot. I'm good.
All right. We'll get to that in a minute. Let's just finish up with the special...
I don't have to ask it then tonight.
Well, no, it, it's, it's on the agenda under the next item. It's, if you want to. Did anyone have anything on the special town meeting articles for tonight? You can, you can take this up on Monday night as well. Any desire to vote any positions on any of these other articles? Doesn't seem like we have a burning desire tonight, maybe because it's after ten o'clock. But I, I think we forwarded to everyone, a town meeting member offered some questions that I think he may suggest for amendments to Article One, memory care zoning. Does anyone want to talk about Article Three and, and vote to support Article Three? We've submitted it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to support Article Three, Article Four.
Well, let's take them separately, so...
Okay, I'll take, I'll make a motion to support Article Three.
Um, Mr. Zulus is second to the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of supporting Article Three, home will petition? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to support Article Four, the Sow Embolment Pro- oh, you know what?
I'll be recused, and I'll just ask Arthur. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go to it, Mr. Wells.
I'll make a motion to support the Sow Embolment Project for Randolph Avenue.
Is there a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ms. Collins, you're back. Great.
Thank you very much. What about memory care? Do we want to take that up Monday night, or does anyone desire to talk about that tonight?
I was ready to vote it tonight, but we can wait till Monday.
I'm happy to vote it tonight. Depends on whatever the majority of the board wants to do. Ms. Collins?
Oh, I was going to suggest that we voted.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to support Article One, Planning Board Article on Memory Zoning Care.
Second.
All, a- any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, ten oh six.
And myself, yes. Honey, this, this one is the reason we have a special town meeting.
Anne Marie, you're gonna learn that we move fast after ten.
It's Article Two is gonna generate all the discussion. All right. Okay, so we're on to item seventeen. And for the annual town meeting, did you want to raise your question, Mr. Wells?
No, we're here to that later. We have time. We have time. It's late.
Okay, but I think we do want to substitute the articles. We have now a combined article instead of, um... Let me just look. Is this on for a vote, or is this only on for discussion?
These are on for discussion.
All right. So just so everyone is aware, I think everyone has seen that we have a combined article for the Guile Road Land Swap. So instead of two articles, we'd be submitting, we can vote Monday night or Wednesday night to swap out the, uh, the new article for the, in place of the two. And the other one was, there's a, there's an updated version of the Master Plan Implementation Committee article that, um, we seem to have sent to the Warren Committee in earlier draft. So we'll just want to vote to make sure we have the right article. If there's nothing else on town meeting articles, let's go into eighteen. We have a request from the Ford House Museum for a letter of support. They sent us some background information, and I took one of the prior letters that the, the board has... They sent us some background information, and I took one of the prior letters that the, the board has done to support the Ford's House Museum, and just added some of our language about the museum itself, and some of the more formal language about the board submitting comments.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to support the, to, for a letter of support for the Ford's House Museum as part of the Mass Preservation Projects Grant Funding Program.
Do we have a second?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, so we use the longer form article, and we'll attach our signatures to it. I, I think if it's possible, we'll probably want to attach the electronic signatures. And if Lynn finds out that they need a original wedding, wedding signatures, we'll just arrange for that to be done. All right, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Meeting minutes for January nineteenth and January twenty-sixth, I, I did send some comments to Lyndon Appleby, I don't know if others did, mine were largely to just try to delete a few things that I, in an effort to make it a little bit shorter, and to add numbering, I, I think it's important that we add numbering going forward, so.
On both, Madam Chair, on the both the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, on both dates?
If everyone's ready and able to do so, I think we can vote them together.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, meeting minutes subject to final edit on January nineteenth and January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and thank you very much, Lynn, for all of the work in the minutes. Okay, a discussion and update on in-person meetings, we wanted to put this on the agenda so that we could talk about when and whether our board should, I guess when, our board should go back into in-person meetings, and see what everyone thought, and we may want to consider this in the context of our meetings next week as well. We're gonna be in, well, we will be in person if we go with our, our practice over the last two years and meet at the Council on Aging for the hour before town meeting. I wanted to bring up the fact that when we meet at the Council on Aging in that room, which is the divided section of the larger room, because the moderator and the clerk use half of it, and we're in a, another half at the wall. You know, because the Council on Aging is closed to the public, and the public can't come in and observe the meeting in person, we're on Zoom, but we've had a lot of problems with echoes, because we're all in the same room, and we all have to keep muting and unmuting, and it, it creates a little bit of a problem with audio, so that's something for us to think about whether. I think we'd have to check with the moderator and with the clerk as to whether there's any appetite to open the Council on Aging so that we could not be on Zoom, and just have a public in-person meeting. But we won't know that, we don't know that tonight, so that's something for us to give some consideration to, as well as to our regular meetings, and whether we want to go back in person, and at the Council on Aging, we could, if we want to, we consider spreading out a little bit more than we normally do at the tables, and think about it, if we can figure configuration of the room. We did go back for brief while last summer. I, I'll confess, I, I, after one of those meetings, I ended up getting a COVID positive test, and everybody had to run out and get tested, so I, you know, I, I still have that in my head that, that may be something we want to think about, and people may or may not be comfortable right away, but what, what is the, what are the members' thoughts on in-person meetings, when and how? I know it's late, we could talk about this next week if you'd like. Let me see, I have Mr. Zulus and then Mr. Wells.
You, you want me to go first?
Go ahead, Michael, I have two proposals, so go ahead, I'll listen to you, ask first.
Yeah, I, I don't really have a proposal, other than I, I think, I think we can go back to in-person, I mean, the schools are back, you know, the people are getting back, it's subject to everyone being comfortable. People are uncomfortable, that's fine, but I, but I, I, I would say, you know, let's, let's try to get back to in-person.
Hey, Mr. Wells?
I'm fine with that, my only thing is, with our committee meetings, Zooms, especially the seven A.M.s, Zoom seems to be very effective in making that happen on some committees. Is that something, as long as statutorily we, we are permitted to do it, could we continue to do that?
We could, we could take the position that, you know, the board may do one thing, and the committees may do another thing.
Okay.
For a while, anyway, maybe something the committee itself wants to talk about. And we still may have other boards and committees who would take a different approach than we do. Mr. Zulus?
Just, that would be my view, that it would be up to each committee.
Okay.
You know, to, to do it.
I don't know about your seven A.M., but my seven A.M. definitely appreciates being on Zoom. Both of my seven A.M.'s do.
I have to say, I don't like seven A.M. meetings generally.
I don't, I don't, I'm with you, Katie, but I, they're there.
I'm still in Boston tonight, so, I mean, usually I'm getting home late, and seven A.M. is pretty tough.
All right, you just said it, let's keep going, no more talking, let's, let's get you on.
What about, what about Mr. Doyle or Ms. Collins, any way or the other, just make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard on this, Melinda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm, I'm fine going back in person, and I'm, I'm not sure, maybe there is a way that we could reconfigure the room, but I'm sure we're all concerned about being close enough to be on camera, because, you know, just so that it, it can be presented on television in a way that people can understand the, or the flow of the conversation, so.
Okay, the Zoom environment, I find a little difficult to, to get as much of a sense as to whether somebody's about to speak, or what, or somebody, people start talking at once, so it could be a little hard to know whether we're ready to go to a vote, or whether somebody still wants to say something. It's a little easier to tell in person, I think. Mr. Doyle, any preference?
I go the majority of the, what I just, the only thought that I had was whether or not the town was going to make a decision for all of its selected and appointed boards and committees, so that things would occur simultaneously to, to avoid confusion, dissonance. Things of that nature.
In terms of adopting a policy?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, and I think we missed, we, we reported, we had some information that was incorrect, we reported a last meeting or so that boards and committees, we're gonna have to go back April first, but town meeting could be remote through July, but it's actually now, all boards and committees could be remote through July, so that date has changed. We got, so we have some different information, more up-to-date information, so we just still have the option to be remote. What, what do the others think about a, a policy for other boards? It sounds like the school committee is, I haven't seen their meetings recently, but it sounds like they've been back in person. I don't know, you know, it may be that another elected board has a strong feeling one way or another, and.
Do we want to talk with them, and find out what their plans are? If we don't have to make a decision tonight, we can gather that information, and maybe put heads together and do things simultaneously.
I guess we could ask the town administrator to have, whoever the appropriate person is to reach out to the boards and committees, and let them know we're thinking about it, see if anyone has any opposition. Ms. Collins has her hand raised, I'm sorry.
All right, I, I think that there should be freedom for boards and committees to do what, what their members feel comfortable with. We're sitting here making a decision for ourselves, and you know, there's a, a, a variable demographic across all our boards and committees, and I, I do think it's important to give them some freedom there. The state has said through July, or in, you know, starting July, so I, I think we should abide by that.
What are the plans, Madam Chair, if I may ask, for the May town meeting, are we good about that yet? I understand what Ms. Collins is saying, and.
I, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if anyone's heard from the moderator on that topic, I think, I, I think generally, when he was in the last time to talk about the special town meeting, there was a hope that we'd be back in person in May, but I, I don't know if there's anything more recent than that from the moderator.
That's what I remember, Madam Chair, is that he was hoping in May.
So we've got different views expressed by Mr. Doyle and Ms. Collins about other boards and committees. I, I think I'm leaning towards Ms. Collins is to just maybe let other boards and committees make the decision on their own, it would also not involve more work for anyone on the staff to have to reach out to all of them, keep track of what the different preferences are.
Same as well, Madam Chair, I agree with you, and, Melinda. I don't have a problem with that either.
All right, Mr. Zulus?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing, I agree, so.
So do we want to target March twenty-third, our next regular meeting? Should we also see what the preference of the moderator might be in terms of the Council on Aging next week, and whether we just meet in person rather than on Zoom, because of the audio problems we've had? Mr. Wells?
I may have a problem on Monday, that's the only one that I had something that I had to do, so I knew I'd be on Zoom, I didn't even think about, but don't, I'll, whatever you do, I'll be, because the, the town is gonna be on.
The town meeting is correct, right? Yeah, the town meeting is on Zoom. Why don't you, maybe you could let, let Ms. Fagan?
I will.
In the next day or so.
That's fine.
Okay, Lynn, did you have a question? You're on mute, Lynn.
Still on mute.
You're still on mute, Lynn, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. When I post the agenda for Monday and Wednesday of next week, I actually use a different format if we don't do Zoom, so I need to know tomorrow.
I'm fine with, we, we're meeting next Wednesday? Oh, you mean for town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Wednesday I'm fine, Monday would be the only one, so I will let you know by eight o'clock tomorrow morning on Monday, if that's okay. Wednesday I'm fine.
You let us know by tomorrow morning about Monday?
Tomorrow morning, yeah, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, or it should, we don't have to post the agenda till later in the day, so sometime in the day would be great. Okay, great, thank you. All right.
Don't be, Madam Chair, don't, just a quick question. Just procedure, don't we have to be on Zoom if the building is closed, if people don't have access?
Yes.
Don't we have to, we have to be on Zoom anyway?
If the building's not open to the public, yes, that would be the question for the moderator and the clerk. You know, I think the planning board is planning on meeting over there as well, I don't know, I, maybe they're gonna be on Zoom, maybe they're not. We could find out from the moderator what the plan is for the, for the location there, you know, the, and the clerk, and others, you know, the M.A.T.V., and they, they, there may be a preference, so we can find that out. Yeah, I don't.
I'll call you on the morning one.
Item twenty-one, I'm gonna ask the board to defer this, this is a comment letter on Kenton Avenue, six forty-eight, six fifty-two forty B. I volunteered to do this, and I started working on a draft, I watched their meeting last night, it was a highly technical discussion about storm, and not stormwater, groundwater. And there was discussion about it moving to the Conservation Commission, so I think we need some input from the planning director, maybe others, to a draft, and we would at least have time on Monday evening to take this back up, so. I'm also trying to find whether we had a revised P.E.L. response letter that we could attach to the combined project, because we, I found the two for the two separate projects, and need to confirm, so it may just be that it wasn't on the website, but unless you know, Ms. Collins, because I, I see you getting ready to unmute there.
All right, Madam Chair, I don't think that we had a combined, but I will take a look right after our meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, and I'll get some input from Mr. Zawinski here. All right, let's go on to the town administrators' report. Ms. Fagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some good news to report. The state enacted a COVID-nineteen temporary emergency sick leave program back in May of twenty-twenty-one. And this program required employers to give their employees that contracted COVID sick time without using any of their accrued leaves. And as a result of this program, cities and towns could apply for reimbursement for the sick time used from May twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one through March fifteenth of twenty-twenty-two. So on behalf of the town, I will be applying for state reimbursement next week in the amount of approximately fifty-six thousand dollars, and so this is good news, it's revenue found. And I do want to thank Amy Dexter for bringing this program to my attention. Having been retired, I, I knew nothing about this program, and she mentioned it to me, and we got right on it, and Suzanne in my office really worked diligently in putting together the spreadsheets in order for us to, to apply for this reimbursement.
Good news, thank you very much, and that, is, is there anything else for your report?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, then that just leads me right into the chair's report and the transition updates, just very briefly. I think has, has been shown tonight during the budget presentation, and on this agenda, item that we just, or this item that we just spoke about, about the recovery of fifty-six thousand dollars. The interim town administrator has really jumped right in, feet first into the budget, and is working very hard, and already achieving some class savings through group insurance budget and other budgets, and as I said earlier, is, is in the weeds with Ms. Praval and with Ms. Dexter, and I, I think Emery's institutional knowledge of the town budget and the operations of the town really has been on full display, and so I just want to thank Emery Fagan for all that she's doing to, to advance the ball and to focus on what's really been primary for us this time of year, which is the budget and getting us ready for town meeting. We've had a very smooth and successful transition, so I'm quite, very pleased with that. And, and as everyone knows, today was Allison Flynn's last day at Town Hall, so we thank her again for her service, and hopefully it won't be too long before we have somebody to take that role and assist Tim Zawinski, who has a full plate of work. I also wanted to just congratulate our new Eagle Scouts on Saturday evening. Mr. Doyle, Mr. Zulus, and I attended the Eagle Scout Court of Honor and read the board's congratulatory letters for Elliot Hiss, Max Hollingsworth Hayes, Max Lenz, and Philip Thanh. And we learned at the Court of Honor that Mr. Doyle was a sponsor, and the Conservation Commission was a sponsor of Mr. Thanh's project for his Eagle Scout. So as always, it was a very nice ceremony, and I know it's late, but it's, it's just nice to see all of the effort that the scout leaders and the scout masters put in, they're, they're really unsung heroes. It's, it's really been eye-opening to me over the last nine years to attend some of these Courts of Honor and to hear the names of these scout masters, year after year, the same people involved with helping guide these young men along, and they, there's so many ways to volunteer in town, and anyone who's a scout leader deserves our, our thanks and recognition for all that they do. So I just wanted to report out what a, what a very nice ceremony it was, and and to acknowledge Mr. Doyle's involvement with one of the Eagle Scout projects, which was very nice.
Crowder is smiling down on you from heaven.
Mr. Crowder, yes. All right, if there's nothing further on that, then just briefly, I wanted to ask the board to authorize, if it makes sense, and if the board's willing to authorize me as the chair to approve and release executive session minutes only for the next several weeks. And the authorization, I think, should end on April twenty-sixth, which is the date of the election. The idea here would be just to see what, for instance, the fire station project has recently closed, so we acquired the land in East Milton, I think those executive session minutes would probably be released. This is really in the nature of cleanup to try to get as much done and off the current board's plate, so that when the new board comes in, the two new members in, at the end of April, will, you know, we will have taken some of this off the plate and won't have to be on the agendas going forward. I guess probably a few other things, such as when we were, when we had an executive session recently to, to discuss a contract with Ms. Fagan as the interim town administrator, and some other one-off types of things like that in the last year or so. So that's what I've been proposing after talking with town council, we can, we can authorize one member of the board to take on this, and I'm happy to do it, and.
I'll make a motion to approve, I, I'll make a motion to approve that the chair, Katie Coleman, approve and release executive session minutes, and release those minutes up until, what'd you say, April twenty-eighth?
April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any discussion? And I probably won't get to this in the next week or two, but hopefully we'll start looking at this later in March, and we'll hopefully get all this, anything released by April twenty-sixth. And at that point, then, the new board can figure out how they want to handle it going forward. All in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Do we have any reports this evening, Mr. Doyle?
None this evening, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
No report, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, thank you.
And Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, just one call, I just want to commend, no police, no fire, and found EMS on a very difficult response that they handled on one thirty-eight last night, which I've also really. which involved some really serious injuries. Um, but it was an all-hands effort, it was, as you saw from the updates. Chief King and Chief Ben. Milton unfortunately has these types of really tragic crashes on our roadways and um, it was a valiant effort last night by all of them to preserve the lives of those people, even though one young, one person did lose their life, so just want to commend them for their work.
Thank you very much. Public comment response? Unless anyone has anything to add, I think we've addressed it during the two items on the agenda. Future agenda dates, we're meeting Monday and Wednesday next week and then on the twenty-third. If anyone has any items, feel free to share them tonight or please just email Ms. Fagan, Mr. Napoli or me. We'll get them on an agenda. Community happenings? Ms. Collins?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, I just wanted to note that, um, there's going to be a forum for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan on April seventh from six to eight, it's an information session, but also a chance to provide some input. Um, and I think you can find the link on, um, on the town website. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Take it.
All in favor?
Look at all that.
I think you had one motion in four seconds.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Collins, yes, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Print out these three-page, these three-page agendas and just go, oh, my God.
I actually thought that when, when Ned Porkin asked to come in at eight-thirty, I thought we might be finished before then and we might have to take a break and just come back, but if that, that wasn't even close, I was way off. All right, thank you, everyone.
Yes.
See you Monday.
Bye, goodnight. I'll call you in the morning, Lynn.